So, good morning, everybody. Welcome to Monday, November 19th. We're gonna call our regular city council meeting to order. We're looking at the list here. We'll move down. We have new council business. I see nothing identified, but just around the room. Was there anything that anybody wanted to bring up? Counselor Parslow?
I have one thing I sent you a little message about. It's a letter from Mayor of Chaplain to the Minister of Energy. It's about the air quality monitoring system as in the materials that we receive from staff. I just wondered if you or staff has some information why the air quality mobile monitoring system is being discontinued?
Yeah, thank you. Just a reminder, if everybody can use their microphones for the cameras, too. Yeah, thanks. I have not heard anything at all. I looked into it and could not find any information. Jim, are you aware of anything?
I'm not. How about you, Jim?
Yeah, so maybe we'll flag that, Counselor, and we'll...
I'd like to be sort of...I feel monitoring the quality of our air and other environmental factors is a real concern to many people, including myself. And I'm surprised that the Mayor of Chaplain, who was originally asking that they also be included in the monitoring system, they must have found out that it was discontinued and are protesting that. And I think we might want to look at that.
So if it works for you, regional district meeting this week on Thursday, I'll bring it up there because it was part of the regional district initiative as well. So I'll find out.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anything else under Counselor's business? Counselor Malkinson?
Just a few things, Your Worship. The library had a successful swap and shop over the weekend, and they're still encouraging attendance at their 40th anniversary event, which is happening at the end of the month. The afternoon one, the evening one is full, completely full. The Meti Nation celebrated Louis Rial Day in various capacities on the weekend there, and I was invited by former Counselor Gledu to attend an event at the college that happened. And it was very, very good. The Christmas tree light-up was really, really good. I'm not saying I was happy to have you out of town, Mike, but it was really exciting. Yeah, I was pretty nervous as well. I saw Terry there.
He did well, Your Worship. He did well.
Good. I knew he would.
Yeah. And I just noticed last night that today is exactly a year since I've been elected. So, November 19th was last year.
There you are. Who would've thought?
Yep. Time flies.
When you get to our age, Counselor, we don't really count in years. It's more than decades, but congratulations.
Generation is yours.
Anything else under you in Counselor's business? No? So seeing none, we'll move on then to minutes. Under 3-1, we have three sets of minutes for adoption. Counselor McFadden, Counselor Schuman, all those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. Any business arising? Seeing none, we'll move on then. We've got correspondence and delegations will start at 9:00. We have a few of those today, so we'll move right up to reports. First report, 7-1, 12-260, from the Deputy Director of Community Services. This is regarding the fire hall renovation tender. Counselor Kenny, sorry?
I'll move the recommendation that report number 12-260 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding the fire hall renovation tender, 2012-34, be received. And further, that WL Construction be awarded the contract for the bid price of $92,645 plus taxes.
Seconded by Counselor Schuman. Any questions or discussion, or anyone? Counselor McFadden?
It's maybe not apropos to this motion, but I'm wondering, have we looked at all down the road for a new fire hall, a new facility? And if we have, what would the cost be to build a new one? A stick route from around $5 million, $10 million? I guess it's just maybe a moot point, really.
I guess it would depend on what you do, I believe. $15 million is the price tag on Fort St. John's that they just built. But Jim, I don't remember that being a long-range plan.
Through Your Worship, at the moment, the long-range plan and the Fire Department Master Plan is that the next facility built would be a training facility. And that would allow quite a few of the uses that are in the existing building to move to the training facility. And the hope is that that would then extend the life of this building substantially.
Okay. So seeing nothing else on this, all those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. So next is 7-2, which is report 12-262 from Chief Financial Officer. This is regarding the Encana Event Center 2012 Business Plan. Counselor Wilbur?
I'll make the recommendation that report number 12-262 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding the Encana Event Center 2012 Business Plan be received. Further, that council accept the business plan as presented by Global Spectrum Facility Management.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Kenny, and any discussion? Stollinger, you look like you had a question.
Oh, just if anybody else had anything to say. I wasn't sure, Your Worship. So the report is...the basic premise of the report is that we expect about $1.5 million subsidy until 2017. Is that right?
Based on the business plan that's in front of us, yes.
Yeah.
Of course, that's always a liquid-moving target with Global Spectrum. If we're successful in getting more acts or an anchor tenant, things can change. But the business plan in front of us right now shows that.
The business plan also includes that...sorry, Mr.?
No, go ahead. Finish off.
The business plan also includes the plan to redo that convention center there, or, you know, the unfinished spaces as well. So we'd be allocating resources by approving or accepting this report. Is that right?
It would still be part of our financial plan.
Oh, okay.
Through Your Worship, this is the plan for the center, but like all of the departmental business plans, every year you have to approve a specific budget and any capital requests. And there are always more requests and there are resources.
I was just curious.
Yeah, that's fine. Good question. Counselor McFadden?
Just a question probably for Ryan. I noticed that in 2008, there was 13 events. And then so far, it looks like year-to-date '77. I'm wondering if they've identified...is it Country and Western, or Rock, or Alice Cooper, or Caesar Milan, or is there a...
It's good to see that Alice Cooper's his own genre.
Yeah. I'm not sure what the word "is there a..." Well, you know what? I think you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, through Your Worship, you know, country sells, and so does rock in a variety of its form, whether it be classic or more current. And, you know, every year or every day as we go through the business, right? We work with our partners. We're looking at different, unique opportunities that present themselves. And, you know, our goal is to provide...maximize the number of events, but provide a diverse mix. So you'll see...continue seeing, you know, the Caesar Milan all the way through to the old classic country and try to do some more pop, et cetera. Just all really depends on what's out there and what's to tour.
Just one. And then I noticed, I think I saw where there was a...one of the key players in the promotion business is retiring. Ron somebody? Is that going to adversely affect what you're trying to do there?
Through Your Worship, no. I think that it just changes a little bit. The business is changing a little bit as well. So I think you'll see just a shift to his son and through some of his partnerships. I think Ron is about 72, and so he, you know, he's...although we talked to him last week, you would think he's 42. He has no intention to slow down, but reality is, is that he has, you know, been told by his wife to slow down.
So he'll be slowing down?
Much like myself, Your Worship.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you. Thanks, Ryan.
Counselor Kenny?
I thought it was interesting with having that space expanded. I think that that's great because we don't have that kind of space in our community right now. And so actually, your cost for doing business when you do put on these events will be less. I think it's gonna require less setup if you're permanently set up. I think that's a really good move. And all the spaces that are available now in our community are too small to hold any significant number of events. And those events are out there. And we have the hotels now, and we have...and to have the space included is great. I liked the value-added using the existing service that you have with ovations in doing catering. So where...what...when you're speaking to catering, are you going outside of the center and catering in other places?
Sure. Through Your Worship, you know, it's...the service is in some cases already provided. We're just really taking it now after several years. We've been doing it for several years, but really taking it and moving it forward. And it's just not on the ovations on the food service side, but it's the ticketing side. We've had some meetings with some local groups within the community about extending the ticketing system through the community and making it more of a community access point. Same with the front row marketing side of things in terms of corporate sales and the sponsorships, is that we do again have the expertise and the staff dedicated to it. So it's just taking what we do now and really extending and taking it into the community further to really help and grow its revenues. Not just for ourselves, but for the city, but also for those community groups as well.
Is that typical for Global Spectrum to do that?
I wouldn't say it's typical. I would say that it depends on market to market. And it's just in this case, in our market, it's just an opportunity that presents itself.
Okay. Counselor Malkinson?
Ryan, in your report there, there was mentioned one of the threats to the Encana Center was the programming conflicts that exist within it. And you mentioned the access to the running track. I was...received a well-thought-out complaint from one of the members of the community about the...how the walking track is open when it is open. I was just wondering if you could tell me a little bit more about that so I could relay that logic to her.
Sure. It's a...since the venues opened, it's always been a programming conflict in that during or during events, we can't have the track open to the public because the event is being set up, as well as because of the access of suite level and some of the rigging, et cetera, is that the day before the event, we have to have access to it for ourselves so our staff can prepare for the event, we can prepare for the...not only the food and beverage side on suite level, but also from a rigging point of view and preparation for the riggers to come in and rig the show. But also the day after, we don't clean...we clean a large portion of the venue the day or the night of the event and through the evening, or early into the evening. But we really use the next day to clean the venue and get it ready for the public. So it takes us that time, the day before, the day of, and the day after, to get the building back to some sort of shape to make it presentable back to the public. Now, when you throw in multiple events on multiple days, it really...and/or, you know, if you have an event, let's say a Tuesday and a Thursday, it really shortens that timeframe. So we do our best efforts to keep, you know, try to keep it open as long as we can. We work with Parks and Recreation to ensure that our schedule, their schedule is working together. It's just...it's the nature of the events, the visitor we get. You know, when we had the U-18 events, it was just, you know, that whole week. And then you had the two events on the Monday, Tuesday. It really shortens the timeframe that that track is open.
Thanks very much.
And just on that, just to highlight, too, that a lot of the times, it's part of the contract with the act because they don't want people in while they're setting up, seeing what the act's gonna be until the doors open for the people who bought tickets. So there's issues with that under contracts, too. Counselor McFadden?
Just at one time, when we're talking about riggers, you had to bring your riggers in from Edmonton, I think. Is that still the case, or do you have local people that are quick?
Through Your Worship, yes. Global Spectrum has a contract internationally with IOZI, and they're a theatrical international society of theatrical performers. And as one part of that business is the riggers, stagehands, et cetera. So for the past five years, or four and a half years, we have been using IOZI Local 210 out of Edmonton. And from that, there is no riggers, show riggers in Dossie Creek or the Peace Region. And so with that, we've been bringing the riggers up from Edmonton. And we, for the last two or three years, we've been working with IOZI to continue to train a local base from a stagehand point of view. So stagehands themselves, ground riggers, high riggers. But our challenge has been is some of the people that we have trained have moved on because the industry is...the industry up here is changing so fast, and people are moving all over the place. So this life safety is one of the most important things that we look at all the time. And as part of that is that we've made a commitment that until we find and train local riggers, high riggers specifically, the people who are hanging all the chains and motors, et cetera, that those people will continue to come from Edmonton.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for that. Seeing nothing else, I just wanted to say thanks to the...one of the advantages of having Global Spectrum, and you saw it, I think all of council saw it over the last week, some of the accolades that we received from Hockey Canada after hosting that U-18 event. I don't think we could've held an event like that, a national event, without a contract with somebody like Global Spectrum really bringing in expertise. You know, it was great to see all of the great comments, too, about ovations and the food service. Being down on the floor, talking with the players and the coaches, they said that the last couple of years, a lot of them opted out of the food program due to the problems in satisfaction they were having in other communities. And here, it was the opposite. They were looking forward to the food breaks. So I think we need to make sure we pass that. Congratulations and thanks on to that group as well, so.
I really appreciate it. I make sure we'll pass it on of interest. Last night, at the wind-up volunteer thing, Boston Pizza for the U-18, I shared the comment, and I'll share it with you, is that we did a quarter of the business, of our business, of our business plan in seven days. So it's a substantial amount of business that happened in seven days, and it was just extremely impressive, not only for our staff, but for ever to be a part of it.
Yeah, thanks. I know we'll be talking about the U-18 a bit more later on, but thanks again. So seeing nothing else, then, all those in favor, opposed? Counselor Parslow opposed, but thank you, but it's carried. 7-3 is report 12-265 from the Chief Financial Officer. This is the 2013 preview role for the assessment. Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I'd like to recommend that report number 12-265 of the Chief Financial Officer be the 2013 Preview Role Assessment Information Update we receive for information.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Comments? I have one, Shelley. Looking through that, do we have an understanding, maybe when we look at the high, you know, we've got $63 million in residential assessment changes, is that normal across the north? Is that normal in this region? Did you happen to see any of that, or did they share that information?
Through Your Worship, when we're looking at preview roles, there's often no benchmarking that we can look at.
Okay.
But I'm gonna say that it's out of the north for the north and for the whole province. And the thing that's important to note on these numbers is we're getting growth in residential and in non-residential, like in both spaces of your assessment. Plus, we're getting growth in your portfolio numbers as well. So it's good all around. And then basically, what we do is we take this information and we take it to complete it and then start doing our analysis to see how that affects the tax rate of it.
And that was gonna be my next question, when we're looking at the five-year plan and the assumed tax rates that we're looking at based on what we think the assessment...I didn't bother going back because I was gonna ask it today. So is this higher than what we anticipated originally in our five-year plan, what we thought the growth might be when we were setting up a tax rate?
I think it's a little bit higher than the forecast. What we need to do next is wait for that market, non-market report. And then basically, what we're gonna do is see how much of that increase is related to market versus numbers, basically. But based on the preview overall, it generates approximately $940 in additional taxation revenue.
Okay, thanks. Jim?
Through Your Worship, the business increase is larger than what we had anticipated. So we need to find out whether that's market forces on existing properties or whether it is a reflection of new building. We don't have those figures.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, then. Anyone opposed? It's carried. 7-4 is report 12-264 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. And this is regarding a transit route extension request. Well, that's one that...oh, sorry, Counselor Schuman, are you waving your hand?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
So I would move that report number 12-264 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the transit route extension request be received for discussion.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Parslow. All those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. We can discuss. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah. So looking at this, we've got a series of ideas that we can do. And frankly, I think the first one is the best one, where we offer new service to the northwest of the city, but then maintain the Rotary Lake in the center. It's my favorite one.
Yeah. No, I agree. Can I ask then, Jim, when this request came forward from an individual, was...and I apologize in there, I didn't see, but what kind of study was done on ridership? Just because we get a request for somebody to want to go up into that area, I appreciate that, but if we're only gonna have that one person's kids on it, is it worth it to the taxpayers? Was there something done by B.C. Transit to say there's a possibility of maybe 50 new people?
No, there wasn't, Your Worship, because B.C. Transit didn't know if there was any appetite to extend service. We've been, both Shelley and I have been consistent with B.C. Transit, saying the council was not looking to absorb more cost in the transit system. And so this is...if council has a will to expand service to that area, and particularly if the condition is that it can affect service elsewhere, then these...Transit will proceed to do those kind of calculations. But we wouldn't want to raise expectations in that neighborhood unless council did have a will to do one of these kind of changes.
That's right. Go ahead.
So I guess I didn't notice in here, was there a projected increase with that first option? It sort of sounded like it...
Yeah, through Your Worship, there will be some increase because the number of kilometers traveled will increase. So consequently, fuel and maintenance costs will go up. But it's meant to be accommodated within the existing timeframe, so driver expense will go up, that sort of thing. So there'll be relatively minor expense to any of the options that are presented to...again, we would partner with Transit to find out whether there are...whether there's business to be had there. But we would anticipate the risk that subdivision, that area, has a number of young families. We would expect that our overall ridership might, may not change because I believe those folks are walking to 17th Street and 90th Avenue now to get on the bus. But for some of them, that's significant walk.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else have anything? Counselor McFadden, would you like to hop on a bus and drive through there to make sure it'll work?
No problem. But I'm not sure what he means by northwest. It goes now to 17th and 90th. What are you...you're talking up to Imperial Access or something like that?
Well, into the new subdivision, the Crescent Park subdivision. Right now, it does go up 17th to 90th. It goes, believes goes down 90th. There's the people who live north of that, which would be about three, four blocks into the new residential subdivision, which does have a lot of families in there.
Getting closer to the arc, too, which is...
Almost. Well, yeah.
So Counselor Wilbur, sorry?
That was kinda actually what I was gonna say, too, is that it runs closer to the arc. But I think, as Counsel Schuman said, if we went with our first option, it's gonna show us what our ridership is. So it's kinda gives us a test period of that summer. Are these families using it to go to Rotary Lake? Do we have more ridership? So I think without incurring too much cost, we're still seeing if it's gonna be feasible that maybe that be extended down the road as we grow.
Okay. Counselor Schuman?
So then, do we need a motion to explore option one, and then they would come back with the recommendation with information?
Yes. Yes, right. Like, right now, there's no motion, so there's nothing happening, so. Counselor Schuman?
So I would make the motion that we explore option number one with Transit and then see a report at the end to decide if it's something we wanna do. Right?
Okay, is that something like that suffice, Jim?
If you actually have a will for option one, I prefer that that was in the motion and as Counsel Wilbur says, we'll start option...we'll ask Transit to examine starting option one on a trial basis.
So I did say option one?
Yeah.
Oh, and so...
Sorry.
She didn't...yeah, she said option one, but you did say that you wanted to explore it to have it come back before we approve it, so we're...
Well, obviously, they're gonna...so you want it to just get started, then? Let's just do it and see what happens, or...
I don't, but it's up to you what you're making the motion.
The Transit will have quite a bit of work to do before this is implemented, not least of which is the ridership guides. As you know, we've changed those ridership guides midstream a few times, and it's a little bit of a process to do that. So the...it would be preferable if we did do it, as Counsel Wilbur says, to see what the ridership is rather than going to that work, doing all the advertising, and then bringing it back to council where it might potentially be turned down at that time. So we would be comfortable buying it. Transit believes that there are customers there and that this would work.
Okay. Counsel Schuman?
Just a question for Jim. So if we don't do the advertising, et cetera, et cetera, they're just gonna see the bus going through the neighborhood and that'll be their...
Well, but they'll also see it slightly different times elsewhere, so we will actually...there will be a need to do quite a bit of information dissemination, less on that route than on the central route that picks up the seniors. But still, at that route, we still will have to do a fair amount of advanced work before the first changing route.
Okay, so I guess the motion can just be...
It hasn't been seconded. There's no motion on the floor.
Okay, so make the motion that we do option number one and see how it works. Right? Yes.
Second.
Okay. Counselor McFadden, second. Discussion on that motion, then, from council. Counselor Parslow?
I couldn't support such an open-ended motion. How many years have we...what's the time period, for instance, we're talking about? I think that should be included in the motion. Is it until September of 2013? Or how long is this trial going to be for?
Maybe on that, can I just ask, Jim, on the implementation, first of all, how long would it take to get this started? Do you foresee with B.C. Transit?
It certainly wouldn't be in place until the new year. The goal would be to get some of this school year into the trial period obviously. But on Counselor Parslow's point, I would expect that Transit wouldn't consider whatever is left of the school year by the time they can implement this a fair trial. They'd want to run it through the next school year. So trial until September of 2014.
The second point is I can't...I'm comfortable supporting motions that we don't have any idea of the cost implications. The subsidy already for ridership is in two-digit number already, isn't it?
The subsidy isn't two digits. If you look at the overall annual subsidy, we're about $600,000, $700,000, I believe.
So, and that works out as about $14 per rider? Is that correct?
Pretty...that's pretty close, yes.
Close?
It was 1320 last time I looked.
So it's a very costly system, and it's already...they just...so I...I don't know. I'm not trying to support anything without a timeframe and without some cost implications. And yet, I recognize what was said earlier about you go to all this work and then the council doesn't approve it, but so be it, maybe. So I'm not very comfortable.
Okay. Counselor Malkinson?
Your Worship, if the school district changed its calendar, would that run into us having to try and accommodate this request in different ways, or what?
To run like on a 12-month calendar? Is that what you mean? I'm assuming if the school district ever changed that, we'd have to look at Transit in general because there's some time issues.
Through Your Worship, it would have impacts all over our transit system.
Yeah, not just this route.
Okay. I apologize. I did like what you said at the start, Your Worship, you know, knowing the... I did like what you said at the start, Your Worship, you know, knowing the ridership figures and everything before we agreed to go ahead with the plan. So as I sit right now, I, it seems like I'd like to have that in front of me before we, before I support the motion, really.
One, one of the challenges to that is, we can knock on every door up there and you can have fifty people say, yeah, I'd love to have a bus here, and then two people actually ride the bus. I guess that's one of the challenges when you look at even everywhere else in the community as well, uh, which I, I guess is to the point of B.C. Transit would look at this and say the trial period would be the best approach. Is that what I'm hearing, Jim?
Best way to figure it out.
Through your worship, if council is uncomfortable moving now, you could certainly direct us to have Transit bring you an implementation schedule, a work plan on how they would notify, uh, information on what they believe the all, they, they say minor, some extra cost albeit minor, that's their wording. So we could get a figure for what that is, how long a trial period they think it would need to be, we could do all that. What we wouldn't do is go knocking on doors. Wouldn't be able to do much about projecting ridership.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Right now, the motion on the floor is to actually implement it, get a hold of B.C. Transit to implement it and get things started. There is no end date, but I mean, that's to the will of council to try to change it in the future if we felt it wasn't working either.
Trial kind of implies end date.
Sure. Any other discussion on that then? Okay, well, I'll go Councillor Wilber first and then Kenny.
I just wanted to say that, I mean, by implementing it and having that trial, we're going to know very quickly if it's working or not. We have a lot of new development up there, there are families up there, and I see their children using this service to get to school. I mean, the buses are full now, that morning run is packed with kids. I watch it every morning go by, so I, I just think that by trying it, we're going to have our answers very quickly. And if it's not working, we can very quickly say it's not feasible. I see a lot of expense by do, doing all these things leading up to having a trial when I see this as very simple to implement.
Councillor Kenny.
Well, we could put a timeline on it as, as Jim has suggested, we'll enter the two thousand and fourteen. But, yeah, I, I agree, we have to do a trial in order to see if it's, if it's feasible. We would know by two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah, and I think that could be, doesn't change the intent, and we said trial, so you could probably amend it just to put an end date on it, if that's what you're comfortable with it.
I would amend it to put two thousand and fourteen as the end date.
Second. You need a second amendment?
No, no, if it's a friendly amendment, that you, as long as you're okay with it, we can get really crazy on this. Okay, so no, nothing else, so, so now the motion is to do it with the suggestion of the end date at the end of the school year for two thousand and fourteen there, so. Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? It does carry. And with that, we've gone a little bit past nine o'clock, so we're going to move back to delegations. Do we have, oh, sorry, because of the roads.
We're getting that due to the bus cancellations, all the delegations.
Okay.
Maybe we'll see them in the spring.
That was the only fun thing we had to look forward to today.
That's why you're so anxious to come today, was just for that, yeah. So with that, we have two other delegations, one is scheduled for noon today and one is scheduled for two P.M. And so with that change, cancellation under delegations, the other ones being tabled till later. We'll move to seven five then, which is report twelve two sixty-seven, this is from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the Economic Development Task Force appointment. Councillor Kenny.
I'd like to move the recommendation that report number twelve two sixty-seven from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the Economic Development Task Force appointment be received and further that Mr. Dennis Liddell be appointed to the Economic Development Task Force for a three-year term ended November thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, seconded by Councillor Schumer, and discussion? Yes, our first meeting's coming up, our first meeting, uh, sorry, meeting this week is coming up, the third meeting. Councillor Kenny, go ahead.
Um, I, I think maybe a little bit of background, the reasoning in, uh, in seeking out the Dennis was his, his experience in, uh, his background in manufacturing. Uh, he is, he is the president of the Chamber of Commerce, but that was not the only reason to ask him to be a part of this task force. It was actually his, his background in that industry that I thought was a piece missing, that he could bring forward some insight.
Excellent. I was seeing nothing else then, all those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. Seven six is the next one, which we'll probably want to table until after we've heard our delegation, I would assume. It'd be probably a little premature to make a motion before we hear the rest of the story.
Who reviewed this agenda?
I don't know. I, I'm, I'm really wondering. So let's, on that, we'll, we'll table that till after the delegation. And bylaws, first bylaw, we have eight one, is our fire protection bylaw, forty-one fifty-three, two thousand and twelve, for adoption. Councillor Schumer, seconded by Councillor Kenny. All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. And eight two is the nuisance control substance, the amendment bylaw forty-one fifty-four for adoption. Councillor Wilber, seconded by Councillor Malkinson. All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. And last bylaw is report twelve two sixty-one, and this is the revenue anticipation borrowing, borrowing bylaw, forty-one fifty-one, two thousand and twelve, for first three readings. Councillor Parslow and Councillor Malkinson. All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. How easy it is to spin. We'll move under mayor's business. The next one we have is the report from our last meeting when we were going through policies, and this was, I can't find this here. The background in that policy meeting, it was moved and seconded that the mayor and council remuneration for two thousand and thirteen and subsequent years be adjusted to reflect the Consumer Price Index annually. And then that motion was moved to bring it to this meeting for ratification, since we didn't, couldn't do it in close. So Councillor McFadden and Councillor Parslow, and discussion. Councillor Malkinson.
Hi, Your Worship, I bounce this idea of our, having our annuity, annuity, sorry, reflect our, our annuity be increased by the Consumer Price Index. I bounce this idea off a bunch of people that I regularly liaise with. And there's two concerns that have surfaced since then that I think are reasonable concerns. And one, sorry, I don't know why I'm nervous here, but one is that we knew what the, I don't know why I'm so nervous. We knew what our, um, we knew how much we were going to make when we ran for council. And I'm just a little bit uncomfortable, you know, it's always unpopular when councils vote to raise their own annuity. So I think that maybe a better way to do this would be to increase it for the next council, not us, not ourselves.
Okay, um, and that's why the motion was brought forward here for the discussion. The, um, the reason, again, just for clarity for the new council, I think the last time there was anything looked at was two thousand and five, I believe, or two thousand and six.
It was the last time council.
Was the last time council increased their wage at all. And in looking at what other communities have done, because you're right, it is a, it's a tough thing from a council perspective to look at that. So by going to this increase here, which is what a lot of other communities have gone to, so you don't have to, instead of going five, ten years, it's no different when you apply for a job, you know what your wage is when you get it. And a year later, you're saying, you know, do I get an increase after my first year? And most jobs do that, this one here, it's been seven years.
It's not like that job though, you're, you know, raising your own pay, that's why it's, makes me uneasy, right?
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree with it. Before I finish my thoughts, I'll go around then, Councillor Kenny.
I think when we were having this discussion in the closed meeting, it was brought to our attention what, what, how the other communities were being remunerated. And we were on par with those other communities. There was the suggestion of adding a cost of living and, but we are on, on par already with the other communities, so I, I don't see any point in raising it or exploring it any further.
Okay, Councillor Schumer.
Yeah, so we had that conversation, and I think that when we had that conversation, we sort of recognized that no council ever wants to have to raise their own, you know, what they're making. And this would take it out of our hands to look at it every time if it was just, if it just raised with the, the cost of living and then each council, it's now a policy, and then each council does not have to struggle with it every time. Because honestly, we could go on, we could go on for twenty years and it would still be this much because nobody wants to do anything about it, nobody wants to change it, nobody wants to look like they're raising their own, their own income. And I, I don't know, I thought this was a, a good, a good option.
Okay, Councillor Parslow and Kenny.
Just a point of correction, the discussion was in open meeting, it was a policy meeting, but that was an open meeting.
Yes, sorry.
And the fact is that no one was here, so in, in the public, no media, no, no one is attending. So that's why you brought it forward here, so that we couldn't be accused of doing it without people being here. I agree entirely with what was stated by Councillor Schumer. In fact, we're not increasing our stipend, really, what we're doing is maintaining it. I had no idea what stipend was associated with this position, so it was the least of my thoughts. And I'm sure that's true for most people because it's, many of us can earn a lot more per day than we did in a month here.
Or earn more a month than you get.
So to your, to your friends, it's not true. That was not in my mind, I may not be in mind of maybe every, every councillor. I'm not sure it was in your mind either. But the fact is, by doing this, we are just maintaining the sta, the buying power, if you like, of that money, the status quo of it. And we, I think this decision was reached, was it not, by Tomlavage?
Tomlavage is one of them.
Yeah, yeah, it just maintains the status quo because the, it's linked to the Consumer Price Index.
Yeah, yeah. Councillor Kenny.
Well, I, I think if there was a gross difference between, you know, what other councils were, were being paid, then we would be forced to have this discussion. Like, I would not, you know, I'm, I'm not afraid to, to look at, at raising the amount. If, if it was less than what other councils were receiving that are the same populations as, as Dawson Creek. But we are on par with them, and so I, I just don't even know why we're having this discussion.
Well, we're having this discussion.
Because we are, we are on par. If, if it was less, a couple of thousand dollars less, then I'd say, yes, let's have this discussion, and yes, let's, let's, let's do the cost of living rate every year. But we're not, so I don't see the point.
The reason why we're, the reason why I feel there's a point and why we're having this discussion is because we haven't had this discussion for seven years, and other communities actually, when they do it, they'll actually increase their wages by, let's say, thousands of dollars a year at a time, at which point now we're behind, and then we have this full discussion, then we end up doing the same. And with doing the cost of living, we, we've taken it out of that, the hands of doing something like that, goes there. Just, the reason why I'm smirking is we're having this long discussion, it's going to make a difference of about a hundred dollars per councillor.
Yeah.
For, and that's, we just passed a borrowing bylaw for sixteen million dollars without talking about it, we're discussing now a hundred dollars. So I find that quite interesting. The, the reason why I think it's a good idea is going forward, if people are concerned, which I think Councillor Parslow said, I don't think anybody ran for mayor or councillor thinking that they're going to become financially wealthy and that this is a lucrative position, and that's the only reason why they ran. But in some ways, there's a nice having certainty when you're in there that takes it out of the political discussions. We don't have this kind of issue or debate every time there's a discussion going on about raising it, which is why I think it's a good idea, but. Councillor Malkinson.
The way to draw any, draw away any negative or damaging impressions on this council, though, I think would be to make it for the next council, though. Adjust it for the CPI for the next council, that's just my opinion.
Okay. Yeah, I was just going to say, anything else, nothing? So all those in favor then of the motion? Opposed, Councillor Malkinson, so it is carried. And on that, the only thing else I wanted to bring up under mayor's business again was, we had a very successful week with the U-18 and wanted to say thank you to all of the people in the community. I know a lot of council was able to come down and volunteer and help out as well. It was just an amazing week, watching the young ladies, amazing hockey. The, the last couple of days there, especially in the playoffs, when we're getting a couple of thousand people out to those games, just, just exciting. Unfortunately, I wasn't around a television on Tuesday night to watch it again when it was on TSN. I hope people had an opportunity to see it. And again, great, great opportunity showcasing the community. I think when you look again at some of those emails that we were getting back from Hockey Canada and from the teams, thanking everybody, I think one of the biggest groups I'd like to thank is the, the hosts that were with the teams. Some of those people, they, you know, they took a week of vacation and they dedicated that entire week to being the shadow for that team, putting in seventeen, eighteen-hour days, being at the beck and call to make sure that those ladies and the people from out of town had a great experience in Dawson Creek, and by all accounts, everyone did. So that wouldn't have happened without all those great people stepping forward, which is why next time we put in a bid, Dawson Creek will be looked on favorably again for, for hosting any event through Hockey Canada. On that, it's, I'm glad to be in town again. I was gone for the last, I think, seven, eight days during the tour across the north promoting Dawson Creek in all those communities. I think it was a well-received message, a lot of, a lot of communities, when I was talking to, telling people about jobs here, the, a lot of people were saying that they were unemployed but holding out, hoping for a job eventually in their community, but some definitely talked about wanting to move up here. So on that, Jim, we'll go to the diary.
Uh, Your Worship, I have no update on the Hockey Club Center for the open meeting at your next meeting in the closed. We believe we will have all the numbers you need to make a decision about where you're going forward. But as of some legalities, that's going to have to be enclosed first before it comes to open, so. But we'll also be trying to do a tour.
Excellent. Yes, because I'm like Councillor Schumer, every time I drive by at night and the lights are on, I start my own little traffic jam with myself slowing down to look in, so. Councillor Parslow.
A question to Jim, does that, that mean that, that there will be possibly news of somebody bidding on the basement?
Uh, we actually do have a bid in hand, but it is a conditional bid with two different places, depending on which way you elect to go. So that's another thing I can't talk to you yet about.
No, thank you.
Okay. So good, on that, we have something under the consent calendar to move then. So councillor wants to move consent, Parslow and Schumer, all those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. Strategic priorities chart, Jim.
Uh, through your worship, your In Canada Events Center business plan will come off at the next meeting. We believe as, hopefully as a result of the policy meeting this afternoon, your review of city policy manual will come off. We are still in negotiation with when you're going to get your raw, uh, raw water reservoir design and costing forward. That's the one piece, and of course, you're meeting again this week on, with the Economic Development Task Force over their terms of reference. So we're hopeful that everything will be wrapped up by the end of the year and strategic priorities.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I don't believe we have anybody signed up for the question-answer period. Councillor Parslow, you have a, sorry, you have a question on that?
Response to Jim's strategic, if I may?
Yeah, of course.
I may have missed this, I'm just, it's not really the council's one, but it's a question to, I guess, Brenda. And I may have missed this entirely, so. The purchasing policy and user fee philosophy. The purchasing policy has, I couldn't see it enlisting for today's business, and I don't recall that we've ever dealt with it. I know it's listed under your area, so when are we going to be dealing with that?
Well, through your worship, it was supposed to be on today's meeting, but just because of workload, I had to defer to the next meeting, so.
And the user fee policy, that is coming back, isn't it, through Barry sometime?
Yeah, through your worship, again, at your next meeting in the closed, you will have a delegation from your consultant. have a delegation from your consultant, the, it will be his report in draft form about proposed new fee structures and a philosophy beyond, behind that, it's in the closed to start with because there are some implications for collective bargaining in that, then we're expecting that you will authorize a version out for whatever your decision is, out for public consultation, which would then, we try to roll that out in December because of course you're looking for these fees to be effective in the meeting.
Okay, good. So on that, we'll move to media question period, if there's anything at this time in the meeting, no? So why don't we recess for five minutes then or so, just to go into committee of the whole, we can rally up a few people. So welcome back, everybody, we're going to call the regular meeting back to order and we are at committee of the whole, we're going to start at fifty-one, first report we have is from our staff sergeant. Good morning, Milo, how are you?
So it's a nice short report, we don't have a whole lot of terribly pressing issues, it's nice to do. The, I guess first and foremost, me, two weeks ago, I, I went down to French George to accept commanding officer's unit citation, which is a citation for detachment basically for outstanding implementation of community policing issues, I wish I could take credit for that, fully a year before I actually arrived in Dawson Creek, so the credit is due to Gary Trachvich and the other remainder of the team, but it's nice to get that kind of credit and, and I think it's quite a big deal because there were actually only two detachments that were recognized for that out of the thirty-eight that report to the North District headquarters, so we obviously must be doing something right in their eyes anyway, so, so we were, we thought that was a good thing and I reassured that commanding officer that he was doing good work today's as well, so hopefully that is. The other interesting file that we had, which is kind of a bit of a safety thing, is that we had a male that was lying unconscious in a park and, and it's an incredible amount of good fortune, I'm not sure exactly how this, how this happened because we just feel particularly fortunate that we were able to, one of our watch commanders was at three o'clock in the morning, was driving along in a snowstorm and happened to see, pardon me, basically a lump in the snow and, and it turns out that there was a guy, he was hypothermic and likely very near death and he managed to get him first aid and bring him back to the hospital and was resuscitated and revived and made a full recovery, but that was, it's incredible good fortune really, that's, this doesn't happen very often, I don't think, I mean, I've, I've had the other file a lot where we found the person as well and a day or a few days later, but you know, to have found that person is really a credit to that watch commander to be out there doing a patrol at three o'clock in the morning and I asked him how he had seen it and I guess he said that he just was used to driving that road at three o'clock in the morning and something seemed different and caught his attention, he can't actually explain how he saw you, so it was a real interesting thing to me.
Yeah, because I was, that was the one question I was going to ask you was, you know, you, how do you, when people are driving down the road, how often do you see a lump in the snow and think, I wonder if that's a person I should go check?
Yeah, exactly, and, and I'm not convinced if it had been me that we would have had the same story, so.
Was, was he laying like on the ground or on a bench?
He was, no, he was on the ground, close to the bridge in, in the park, you know, that's your, yeah, so he was quite ways in, you know, it was, it was pretty impressive, so.
Good.
I guess the other thing is, we've recently trained ten people in radar enforcement and so we'll probably be seeing a little bit more reinforcement as we get moving on with that. And we've had a number of recent events, or In Canada events, where we've kind of given quite active communication with them and we've been increasing our staff presence on evenings when they're forecasting that it'll be busier and that seems to be a really effective relationship, that's a good thing. And we, as usual, we're in a little bit of a turmoil in terms of our staffing picture, so we've got some people retiring, Linda Bar Two Six retiring after many, many years of dedicated service and we're somewhat panicky as to, as to how we're going to go about replacing her, you may notice that there are no stats in this report and the reason for that is because I'm kind of deploying Linda to train her replacement, so I'm not taking too much away from her in terms of that, we've, we've got, fortunately we've got somebody that will, that will be in a position to do that, they've got some related police experience, which is quite an important role. And I guess the last thing is, we're, we're heading into the Christmas party season, like every police station everywhere, we're going to be conducting some enhanced counter-attack type enforcement to try and deter impaired driving through the holiday season so that we can avoid a tragedy and, so they'll be out there and my recommendation, everybody would do, if you can, take a, so, that's really it, unless anyone's got any questions.
Any comments then? On, on the cab thing in, in In Canada Events Centre, I've noticed that, and it's nice to see that when events are finishing, there's a lineup of cabs at the front door and I see people getting into them.
Yeah, no, it really seems to be, it seems to be quite a good, quite a good thing and I think that ties into some of the enhanced enforcement that we're doing, actually, North District Traffic Services also has been scheduled in advance, so they're actually getting quite a bit of additional enforcement on the evenings, so that's happening in there on the highway to Fort St. John where we've had some problems historically, so.
And on the, on the radar training, some of the comments, obviously the things that hit close to home to people are the things that people discuss or complain about, so when it comes to school zones, do we have a, an active beat rotation where we go out and pick one and do a school zone?
A lot of it is, a lot of it's complaint driven, so, so when we get a complaint about a particular school zone, we will go and, and focus, or at that particular school zone. And, and some of it just ends up being, if, if, you know, the schedule permits it, then the guys will just go out and kind of, and kind of run radar, run speed trap out of a particular school zone, just based on discretionary time, so if there is any, they will do that and I'd invite anybody, if there, if there are any particular areas of concern, give us a call and certainly consent people down to deal with that.
Good, thank you. Anything from council? No?
Thanks.
Okay, well, thanks again for coming in and please pass on thanks and congratulations as well to your member who saved somebody's life.
Yeah, thanks very much, yeah, I'm quite proud of that, that's a good thing, thanks very much.
Thanks.
That is a good thing.
So under fifteen-two, we have the fire chief coming forward, good morning, Shorty.
Good morning all. So, we've been, I guess, not real busy at the fire station, but not real slow, we're almost bang on for the five-year average as far as calls a year to date, so we're just plugging away as normal, hoping for the best, I have a report in front of me, so.
And then I had her baby yesterday.
Oh, did she, I didn't think that, you could say? It's a good thing I come to these meetings. And we know what it was?
It was a boy, almost ten pounds.
Wow.
So not that we don't believe everything that comes out of Jim's mouth, but this morning, one of the councillors asked a, a question, I thought with you being here, it'd be great to hear from you as well, councillor McFadden was talking about upgrading for the facility here and then going into a training centre and Jim was telling us that the future plans that you have for this training centre, it might help the facility, do you have any, maybe you can give us a bit of discussion about that, what the, what kind of things might go to a training centre?
Well, with the training centre, we, we started in a, probably about a four-year process where we'll do a little bit each year and to maintain the skills for the firefighters, there's five props that we need a minimum to be able to train to our NFPA ten oh one level two and those five props are a liquid petroleum spill, a vehicle fire, a below-grade fire, in other words, something that will simulate a fire in the basement so that the firefighters can attack in the basement, and there's a propane tank simulation and then a garbage dumpster simulation, so those are the five that you, you need to, for minimum for maintaining your skills for ten oh one level two, so those will be the, the five props that we'll be putting in there. And the other prop would be a burn building that's going to be high enough to allow us to do some, some rope rescue type of skills, has to be at least thirty-two feet, thirty-two feet is, is the fear of man, so if you can operate at thirty-two feet, you can operate at three hundred and twenty feet, so to speak, so.
Interesting.
So those are the, those are the props that we'll have on there, it's going to be advanced, it has water there now so far, so.
And the plan is to have that operable by next year, the full site?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the hope, this year, right now, all we've done is, is got rid of the top soil and put in gravel and we'll have the fencing done by the end of the year, we've got the water in there now, so hopefully by next year, we'll have it operational.
The, through your worship, the consultant that did the work for us indicates that if we were to marry those elements with meeting room space, that we could potentially have a revenue generator as a regional training centre, so, I mean, that's a, that's a goal, but that resourcing still would require.
Good, good, thanks for that. Anything from council, councillor McFadden?
I noticed in your, in your stats, Shorty, you show nine motor vehicle accidents and then one rescue and safety incident, did you have to go and rescue somebody that was not involved in a motor vehicle accident or?
Yeah, rescue and safety, I don't, I didn't bring the particulars on that one, but that could have been, that could be, if it's not a motor vehicle accident, it could be somebody stuck in, in an area, it could be assisting the ambulance.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Okay, councillor Parslow?
I thought once council had approved the budget, that you would be, to use an expression, hard to trot to get your new fire truck, I see it's still, we're just getting RFPs. You pushed so hard for that, why, why is it?
I found out, no. What we've done is, the process to purchase the fire truck is, we have to sit down, we, we drew up a committee and the committee sat down and spec'd the truck, in other words, we talked about what we need on the truck as far as the size of the pump, the cabinets, how many people, size of the motor, all those things, and that's put together in an RFP. Now, that RFP right now is sitting with city staff just to get formalized, make sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted and they're busy people over here, so it's, it's not on the top of the priority list, but I'm hoping it's working its way up there, so, so yeah, so once that RFP is done, then it's about, about a month before we'll get any proposals in and then we'll go.
I can't help ask a supplementary question then, how did you know how much to put in the budget? For a fire truck, if it wasn't specced out already?
Basically, what we do is, we go off and we just talk to some of the manufacturers and say, if we were to buy a pumper truck, sort of give them a ballpark idea of what we want, then they'll give us a ballpark idea of what the cost is going to be. Now, this ballpark idea is already a year, a year bit old, maybe two years old, so right now, five hundred thousand dollars is what our, we're hoping we'll get a request that'll meet that, we're hoping.
We're hoping too.
I mean, some of the things, I look at it, you know, it's, you look around the, the area, some of the new trucks that have just been delivered are, you know, six hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand, you know, they're big ticket items, they're a lot of dollars.
Do you have one more councillor?
I sure hope we have sufficient money for the one that's.
Yeah. Good, well, thanks, Shorty, and I guess I'd also be remiss if I didn't put in a plug for your members over there too, for their calendars that they're trying to sell. I know they worked with, it was Trina Gower, they put a great calendar together with the firemen, some amazing photos of some of the fires that happened downtown and so they're all selling those right now, twenty-five dollars each and they're raising money for the burn unit down in Vancouver.
Yeah, and, and thanks a lot for purchasing so many, because then when you go buy, when I went to buy my, my one calendar, that support them, they're like, hmm.
Did they blame me for buying them all?
The mayor bought way more, you should buy more.
I only bought ten.
Thanks, yeah, I only bought ten, that's what they said, you know, the mayor bought ten.
They, they made about a thousand calendars, there's about two to three hundred left.
Wow.
If they sell them all for twenty-five dollars a piece, there'd be about eighteen thousand dollars that would be donated to the burn.
Beautiful.
Excellent. So you can buy nine more councillor and help them out. Thanks a lot, Shorty, then, for coming in and please say hi to the members over there and it's one of those times of year that we're hoping, hoping they're not too busy, so. Also on that, fifteen-three, director of corporate administration, good morning.
I should start off by saying that I'm, I'm pretty sure that the fire truck is top of the list for the next RFPs.
Good job for your plug then, Shorty.
Right now, we're accepting applications for a position on the library board, the applications are open till November twenty-third and today we have one application, so that should be good. Another thing, October thirtieth, we brought a staff appreciation luncheon at the King Arena Meeting Room for all the city employees, thirteen staff were recognized for the long service and I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize them now. So, to start with the ten years, Amy Kemp from finance, ten years and fifteen years of service, we have Carl Pichik from parks, Margaret Keith from the library, Cindy Lefferson from RC&amp;P, and twenty years of service, Monica Dobrovsky from aquatics, Elaine Fowhauer from the works, Scott Burley from parks, and Tyra Henderson from the administration. Twenty-five years of service, Ron Wagner from parks, Dee Rutledge from parks, Neil Johnson from building maintenance, and he's retired this year, and we have thirty years of service, two employees, Heinz Hess from the fire department and Ted Prezins from the fire department and Will Devant who retired this year.
Good, well, congratulations to all of them.
And one other thing I want to mention was, there's a special meeting coming up on this Thursday, November twenty-second, at three o'clock to the Best Western Meeting Room in regards to the water source proposal and I went through the Dawson Creek City Council, the Village Police, it's council and the Water Source Committee and that's open till.
Yeah, it's not a town hall meeting.
It's not a town hall meeting, no.
It's not a town hall meeting, no, it's open to the public and there will be a meeting scheduled after that.
Yes.
Got some questions.
In the evening.
Yes, tomorrow.
But this is to gather more information, so when we go out to the evening meeting, we have a bit more.
That's our line up.
Good. Well, thank you, any questions then from council? Just my apologies and congratulations again to all of the staff for the, the years of service and unfortunately, being away, I wasn't able to make it to that luncheon, I'm hoping a few councillors were able to make it.
Sue.
All the appreciation.
Yes, yeah, thank you then for that. Good, so seeing nothing then, thank you very much and we'll move on to our chief financial officer under fifteen-four. Good morning, Shaun.
How are you? So I have your report in front of me.
So do we.
Yeah, there's not much new because all the reports the finance does, comes to council, so looking back in October is a long time ago, it's just a whole month ago, but we do give some funding figures for the Calvin Center for the Arts and the Water Reformation Project, so those are before you and yeah, we're just going to work hard on getting our two strategic priorities off the chart and we've started looking at budget and we're prepared for year and so it's, it's steam ahead. But I guess the question that I have for council, is there anything that we're not reporting on that you would like to report?
We're getting to that point where I know we'll be inundated with information because of the budget coming up here within the next few meetings, so I know that's going to keep us busy, I can't think of anything else to add on top of that.
All right, if you do though, let, please let me know.
And I don't, I know in your report too, you, under strategic priorities, you put some dates for possible completion dates to come forward, so thanks for that, gives council an idea of when to expect them. Any questions for, okay, go ahead, Shaun.
Let us have one question, it relates to the Calvincruck Centre for the Arts, you state under your second bullet, the project has been funded to October thirty-first, 2012 is followed, provincial funding six million, three, nine, nine, four, four, two. I, I thought their, their grant was in the order of three million and the feds was three million, it, it, two billion.
Provincial, federal, but basically I have provincial there because it's administered through the province, but it is, it's a.
provincial slash federal, okay.
They have a special name for those types of grants, but because it's administered.
Flows through the provincial, yeah, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Oh, okay, well, seeing none then, we'll move on to fifteen-five, Mr. Henderson's going to come forward, I think, sit in the hot seat. Mr. Henderson's gonna come forward, I think, sit in the hot seat.
Morning, everybody. Have a beautiful day.
Sure. What'd you say, the weather's back?
Winter is back.
Well, at least somebody's happy.
Sorry, everyone.
Good news for the ski, I see they're better making snow. Good going. Couple of things, building permits. You'll see that we're, as of the end of October, about thirty-three, just about thirty-four million dollars in building permit values, which is another strong year. It's not quite to the levels of 2011, but hopefully we'll have a strong finish, finish in the mid-thirties, which certainly puts us some pretty big numbers over the last three to four years. So that's great to see, and just looking at, again, a change in the dwellings. Again, this year's been more of a change to a lot of single-family dwellings.
Yeah, last year it was more duplexes.
More of the mix. So it's just kinda as the market moves and flows and the demand, so interesting to see. Thirty-nine single-family dwellings. That's a lot of homes when you, in Dawson Creek, there was years when two, three, or four homes in here. It was a big year, so that's, that's exciting. It's great to see.
It's great to see.
On the engineering and public works front, um, we, in October, we finished up Capitol Works projects. We got the Socka Park Road finalized. We, we just ran out of time for the last few little things. We are going to, in spring, install some speed bumps through there. It's ready now, unfortunately, it looks a bit of a drag strip, but we'll, we'll get some signage in there. And those speed bumps, which will certainly keep people slowed down. But I think overall, that part of the turnstile will be nice. I think there's gonna be some real benefits, not only to the users of the fields, but also parking for events and home sites.
Yeah, I've noticed it already, being, last couple of events being used, so. Shorty, you have a question? Sorry, Councilor Parzl, go ahead.
Speed bumps?
Yes.
We put in speed bumps into this new, new road. What about snow clearing? Don't do any snow clearing there?
We will probably only snow clear when there's an event. It won't see the regular maintenance that a road gets, because it's, it's not a road actually, it's parking lot, but, so we'll probably have to deal with that on an annual basis.
Yeah, I'm just asking that question, just, you know, some people have in the past asked for speed bumps on roads such as Seventeenth Street, because people coming into town drive like hooligans into, into the community, and they've been told, "Speed bumps are out because of snow clearing things." So that's why my ears picked up when you said, "We need to put them in someplace." Are we opening a can of worms by putting them in one place and saying we can't put them in where many local residents think there's a need because of the dangerous driving that takes place on these streets?
Well, again, I, I mean, from my perspective, I do it as a parking lot in our road, so it doesn't see the same level of service that a road does. But again, as we go through our transportation basket plan, if there's some input and some, some opportunity there, that's, that's really what I wanna see, is go through that plan and see what comes out of that. Maybe there'll be some recommendations or something that we're not seeing.
Is there any benefit to using, like I've seen down the parking lots in Vancouver, of course, there's not the snow clearing issue, but they have the removable bolt-in speed bumps that they can, we could remove them in the wintertime?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen those as well. So you could look at it as a seasonal approach.
Yeah, all right. We'll leave it to you.
Yes.
Okay, the only question I had on that, do we plan on, before the next season starts, are we planning on and budgeting for lining, parking stalls?
How about you?
Yeah, we, we've had some discussion, and that was part of the plan.
Because there's actually identified, we tried to, I know the groups down there tried to identify certain areas that were by the gates, which were the disabled parking, and then my only fear is if we don't have lines, it'll be, sure, we have the, more parking stalls now, and we have, the dust issues will hopefully be away, but now it's just to make sure that people use it as a parking lot properly.
Yeah. And I think at the very least, we will identify all those special areas such as where we don't want people to park, and also some handicap spaces.
Perfect, yeah.
We just haven't landed on whether we wanna look at angle parking or straight-end parking, and just what's most feasible, but.
Yeah. Okay.
Couple of stats there from Public Works. You'll notice we are now keeping track of all our water use for various functions. So you'll see for flushing and other things, total of fifty thousand gallons for a month of, of October, so.
And signs, that's to wash the signs?
Yeah, we, we usually fall and spring steam off signs, just because, especially in the spring, they get covered with a lot of crime.
And root cutting?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have a number of sewer mains in the community that are on a list that get root infiltration. So we have a shovel program where we go in and actually the tractor truck has a special head on it, that's basically around saw blade on it, and you run it down there, and it cuts out roots that are coming in and just keeps out of the sewer.
And, and then water is flushed through to rinse away?
Yeah, you cut it, then you flush it, and suck all the material out of it. Just, should be noted, and maybe the council's not aware, but we have an extensive sewer maintenance program that keeps our flusher truck going pretty much year-round as long as weather permits. We have to run just about every day while we can to stay on top of all the sewer flushing. That's how much we have to do.
What's happening down, is it on the end of a hundred and fifth?
Hundred and six, right by the altar.
What's happening there? Noticed.
Actually, we were root cutting in that line, and that's one of the lines that are in some poor shape. And root cutter got stuck in there, so we ended up having to excavate it.
Yeah, I just noticed them there. Quite a bit of terrain.
They were there quite a while too, weren't they?
Yeah.
Sewer master plant.
Yes. Fascinating.
A couple of other things I'll touch on quickly is, we had to, we had a pump failure at the year's life station right at the intake of the river, so we've had to remove one of our pumps and get that rebuilt. The good news is that, you know, our usage and the existing pumps can keep up, but it's just, just a maintenance item that we have to deal with. There's a graph in here that shows sulfate analysis for our, for our water, just to council lengthful. You'll see that, you know, the river water is anywhere between nineteen and twenty-four parts per million. Treated water's, you know, averages around sixteen, seventeen parts per million, so.
And what's our reclaim? Do we know?
Reclaim ranges anywhere from a level of one hundred and ten to, right now, we're creeping in a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty parts per million, so. It'll be interesting to see that if, and we'll continue to check maybe later in the winter with the raw water to see if, because the river is fed by groundwater mostly through the winter, and see if there's any changes in that, because that's where a lot of that sulfate and plant comes from, is from the minerals in the ground. So we'll just, just out of curiosity, see if that changes.
Sure.
But in terms of the sulfate in the reclaim, we are now convinced it is leaching off the actual construction materials in the seager cells. Um, the, there's nothing in our, in our sources that would generate that amount, amount of sulfate. We don't have an industry that uses a lot of sulfate and disposes waste into our system. So it appears that the construction method of the seager cells with the gravel base, that we have that leachate.
Yeah, certainly. Coming, could be coming from the minerals of the ground.
Is that, that's something then, over time, would eventually diminish then, if it's out of the ground?
Probably could diminish over time, yes. Shell was active in the month of October, took about twenty-five thousand cubic meters of treated upland for, for their needs. And we've started up with the truck sales, and we've seen, I believe it was Fair Energy took a fair amount for a project for Bear Hole. So that was good to see, and we'll move forward with that, so. The flows for October from the water treatment plant, four forty-six thousand, or sorry, forty-six million US gallons, which were below average, and we saw that every day with our, our stats, with our daily usage around one point five, one point six million gallons. It's definitely, it was, it was below average, so. When we get into the winter months, if we're, if we're under fifty million for the month, then that's, that's a below average, that's a benefit, so. Just, just as a side note, moving into 2013, we're gonna be converting all our, all our units to cubic meters. We've got too many units floating around between imperial gallons, US gallons, and cubic meters, so as we move into 2013, we'll see all of reporting in cubic meters.
Which is good, because the industry refers to everything in cubes as well, so.
Yeah, the only reason that we use US gallons is our pump manufacturers, typically all the pumps come out of the United States. They're all in US gallons, and that's why for us so long that we're, you know, converting with US gallons. It's just, it's time to move on.
But just for, to help me out, what's in a, was it, two-hundred-and-twenty, two-hundred-and-thirty gallons in a cubic meter?
About two-hundred and sixty.
Two-hundred and sixty.
And just on the watershed steward, and just a couple, couple of things. We're continuing to do some, some research on groundwater. We are working with GW Solutions to do some more cross-sections on the, on the Kiss Katana Water Basin, to give us some more information on, on groundwater. And we're looking at also doing a couple of test wells to, to look at that opportunity, see if there's, there's some opportunity for cogmentation from groundwater. So we'll be moving forward with that throughout the winter, and Bear Hole, we haven't changed anything up there right now, but the flows are still coming out of Bear Flow about thirty-eight hundred cubes a day. We wanted to maintain that until the river freezes over. We got a good, a good flow established, and then we'll monitor the changes next year.
Good.
I sure appreciate this report from him and, and the media of hope.
So with that, if there's any questions, any more questions?
Yes, just one, and I really, not ever in favor of generating needless work, but just, you've got a, your last piece of information on your report, complaints received year-to-date, has the number five thirty. Has there, I'm just, so there might, there's a question in curiosity, I guess. Have you ever analyzed them? Is there any, is there any grouping? I mean, if you're looking for trends at all about, are they, you know, roads or sewage or what? I just, just wondered, the number five thirty looks large. Of course, they could be four hundred from the same individual or something. So I, I just wondered, have, have you ever been led to try to analyze what they're all about?
That's, that's a very good question. These complaints stem from bylaw, so they would relate mostly to tall grass and weeds, let's say, or barking doe. But that's a good idea. I can certainly get Gladys to provide a support on it.
Well, I mean, I'm just wondering if there's some useful information that's, you know, as we get, you, you guys give us a picture of what's going on. Maybe some categorization might, you know.
I know last time she did something like this was quite a few years ago, and it seemed to be, the common trends were, you know, somebody phoning all the time because the neighbor's bogs, the dog's barking, and it gets referred, or, you know, "That guy's been parked in front of my house for three days. Can you come tow his vehicle?" Those kind of things end up at bylaw, but it would be interesting to, you know, if there's a trend, because who knows? If you know of a trend, you can sometimes fix an issue.
Oh, so that makes me ask the question, so the calls that come in to three-one-one, say, complaining about snow or removal or something like that, is that encapsulated in that number? Or is it just bylaw?
This would be bylaw issues.
Okay, all right.
Okay, anything else then for Kevin? Okay, well, thanks for all that information.
Thank you very much.
Let's just take two minutes here, because I think we have to load up a PowerPoint, don't we? Or is it, oh.
PowerPoint will be in two weeks.
Okay, sorry, I just saw this here. Go ahead. No, it's fine.
Nice to be back in the chair. I just wanted to, the report's a very important, key highlights we wanted to do, and then we're gonna give a very brief update on the U-18s and explain why we just wanted to work some of that forward. Shante's department's been very busy as usual. It's their transition into our, our winter programs. But a couple of very important activities are happening within the department. We wanna make sure that are highlighted. We're hosting a Northern B.C. Rec Association meeting, which is a great opportunity for regional transition in regards to sharing of ideas and some, some key topics, the recreation professionals within our area. We're quite deep enough from lower mainland, and certain trends that we see are more directed to what we see every day in our, our facilities. Shante and the crew also have a very successful run, jump, throw. And I think, you know, when you follow trends in recreation, there's a lot of research that points that kids just aren't actively engaged as much as they were when we were children or when, when some of the programs were there. And there's some direct linkages to, to sports activity. If you don't do certain activities by certain ages, that you just basically stop during them. And, you know, if you don't pick up a ball and throw a ball or actively use your arm in a number of sports, the ratio to those sports that you do not complete when you're older are starting to be very high. You know, the age of fifty, when I pick up a baseball and try and throw it, it just doesn't happen anymore. It's not happening when they're thirteen, fourteen pounds a year, you know, so if they're happy. So that, that was a very successful program. And it's really geared towards the younger groups and hoping that they pick up baseballs, kick soccer balls, et cetera. A lot of things to talk about in our upcoming events, and I just wanted to make sure council is well aware of them. As we move into the Christmas season, these are big events at our facilities, our Parks and Rec program hold. But highlighting the number, I didn't want to ask Shante what a human shuffleboard and a public skate was, but I think it's all good.
Sounds like fun.
It's lots of fun. Highlighting Skate with Santa at the Memorial Building December ninth. Free skate, a family skate coming up on December the twenty-third, and a free family swim coming up December twenty-fourth. So these are ones that if we can keep promoting and getting people actively engaged, and a great opportunity for families and friends and relatives going into the Christmas season to be active. I just wanted to go forward to our strategic priorities, our user fee policy. We will have a huge presentation coming with council on December third, workshop, and then we'll be looking and taking council's recommendation to do our last public consultation, and look to finalize that at the end of the month as well, to meet our strategic commitments. The energy managers, you know, as we've all completed, and information coming forward. And the U-18s hockey championships, done. So we're very proud of that. We're gonna do a report on that right now. And Shante, I wish you'd be up here, because you're over in Tubi, but she wants to sit in the background and I will talk about her and her. So today, we're just gonna give you a very brief overview, and I wanted to summarize a few things in a report format, which I wish I had the grades that I'm gonna give out to you. First of all, I want to thank council and for the vision to be able to host this opportunity. This started three years ago, when we put double bids in for U-17s and U-18s, and were awarded that, I think it was three years ago in the spring, so there was a lot of work that took place. I think it's, to say it was a huge success in many ways, I think is an understatement. We had our volunteer wind up last night, and we had, we asked the host to actually talk about things that impacted them as hosts, and, and the stories that they talked about were all about our community. So very, very interesting stories, which we're gonna capture in a video and enter into a slideshow in two weeks. Co-chairs Tara Mares and Shante Patterson-Elvin, they've prepared every detail that we could have asked of our host committee, and led a very dedicated group of directors over many months of planning. These people gave up literally hundreds of hours of time, and I think Councilor Parzl could relate to hosting the Northern, you know, the games, B.C. Winter Games, and you have to have a working crew that, that you can work with. And I, you know, I can't speak enough about how dedicated those people were, but then to see them in action throughout the week was, was pretty amazing. Those directors in turn worked magic with our corporate sponsors, literally, you know, worked to the last Gatorade that was served, and then taking down the buildings, which we still have lots of Gatorade for our Parks and Rec program at Chalk and Delight, which is good. Over a hundred Dawson Creek residents gave their time, many of them spending day after day at the rink, and really showed a bit of volunteerism as a volunteer community. day at the rink, and really showed a bit of volunteerism as well in our community. So the report card, the basic report card, I look at overall success of the program, we're getting accolades across the country, and I was just in Montreal to hear President Bob talk about, and Chair Jolanne Hughes, who spent the week with us as chair of female council. Those accolades are, we're still receiving from the provinces and across Canada, and we're even getting reports back to families now, passing those messages out through Hockey Canada. I really believe we blew this one right out of the park in a lot of ways. We called it the cake, and they presented me a cake. I kept driving home, the need to travel, accommodations, meals and venue were a number one factor. And Ryan always warned us about contingency plans, and I remember coming back from fall council, and it snowed every day leading up to our event, and we started to think about, well, that perfect plan of them walking from accommodations through. And I'm glad we had contingency plans in place, because the ice storm on Saturday morning when teams were arriving threw all of our plans, you know, out the window, because that went right across the east and Saskatchewan. You know, we're backed up, and planes were laid, and equipment was backed up, but the directors made a great, you know, everyone was in and everyone got safe, and once we got them here, everything worked out very well. So that cake of travel accommodations, our accommodations on the floor, accommodations down in that corner outstanding. We had zero complaints about those facilities totally at all. And then our venue, obviously, and our meals, and we'll share a little bit more about the meals, because number one problem that you run into is complaints is about meals, and I'll let Ryan speak to that in regards to how they handled those people through, but food was absolutely outstanding. So I give that an E plus. Tournament action, at the game, if you followed the game, it's improved so much in ten years, what I've seen in the skill level. I highly predict Quebec, I watched them in their practice, and was absolutely blown away by the skill level of the female game. And, you know, we had a lot of firsts, Ontario Blue, you know, winning, that's the first time Ontario Blue, Ontario Reds won all seven previous years. Four to two in the final, and B.C. was defeated by Ontario Red, I guess?
Yeah.
Was it Red?
Yes, yeah.
In overtime. So B.C. and Fred are still a little concerned that they just couldn't hang on, it was actually great. Then we talked about the sprinkles and icing, and first of all, I'm thankful to the community support was outstanding. Corporately, legacy host support, and, you know, you couldn't see, when you hear our sports store changing out a broken blade, taking a brand new pair of skates off the shelf and changing them out, like the stories that are shared, we're, I think council will be very impressed, I don't think some of yous have heard them, but anything that was ever needed in our community was found. And again, go back to the hosts, because they just knew where to get it, you know, knew where to find it, knew who to ask, knew who to get them. We literally had jerseys that were improperly numbered by Hockey Canada, or rendez plates on them, and Promo Shop changed those out. They actually had a secret, if anyone saw them, I think they had a player that was four eleven, and I think that was stretching it. And her jersey came down to her knees literally, and I found it seems just here to redo that. So, you know, that's our community, so, pretty priceless. And I can't, I'm not going to speak too much about this, do you see the pictures, but if anyone's heard of the seniors' visit, this one's going to blow me away in two weeks. What the team Ontario Blue did, our seniors were outstanding, and they actually said it was the reason they won, like how they pulled those young ladies together. So when you see those pictures, they are priceless. The only bad thing on our report card was weather, and we gave that a C minus. While we had everything thrown at us, the shouldn't, maybe it's looked good, and then it dropped to minus seven.
And that's not your fault, because usually councils blame for the weather, so we'll take.
Yeah, but again, the gifting, they all had their scars, and we could saw the girls wearing their scars and their hats. We adjusted to everything that we could do. And finally, again, I can't say enough about those volunteers in our committee. And budgets, as we say, and finance grades to be assigned, we're very happy with the preliminary budgets that are coming in, we feel very comfortable that we met all our revenue targets, succeeded our revenue targets, and saved on our expenditure side. And a lot of that had to do with corporate giving and even kind donations, so, very good. Hockey Canada supported, I think on this one, we exceeded every expectation that they had, and when they start to compare us to the ability, Jim hosting a Royal Bank Cup and being better prepared than at that level, I think it really bodes well for some, when you have the lookings in town, like, you know, Jennifer Botterill and Mel was upstairs, and, you know, our voice, Michelle Powder was in, and there was another lady that was really the pioneer. When you see those people talk about our community and how we treated the national team back then, certainly boded well for how we were able to pull this one on. There were well over three hundred parents that attended, and we're quite excited about, we did a survey, and I want to thank Kevin and the chamber and helping us, and the volunteers that did that, well over a hundred and fifty surveys were completed on new electronic pads. That data will have, and we're hoping all the data's ready for two weeks. We're looking forward to sharing that with council. And most of that was geared towards the parents coming into town in regards to, you know, the travel or their rentals, their accommodations and their meals. And I want to use one example, we were over, because I know a lot of businesses were very busy, but we went to eat late after the Sunday game, we took Hockey Canada, they had been to Browns, and we were waiting, and there was the two tables, they were full of T S N. Twenty-two parents from Ontario Blue were celebrating, B.C. parents had just left, and literally we had a table of ten or twelve of us, and they said, we're out of this, 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 and this, and by the time you're seated, we're probably going to be out of this, so if you still want to come in. And so I ran into Darcy at the concert on Tuesday, and I asked him what that impact was, and he said, literally, they were slammed, and probably twenty to twenty-five percent additional business than over a normal good week. So I know a number of businesses were very busy, and can't thank each corporately individually without just thanking the community overall. And finally, which one I think really blew us away is, there was over forty-five universities, scouts here, coaches from across Canada and literally into the States, and when we talk Harvard, Yale, Princeton, there's some very prestigious scouting that happened. And again, every time we made time to talk to them, they thanked us for what we provided. Including Mal Davidson, who was up for the week, and most of yous might have seen Mal or said a little to Mel, and the whole U-18 coaching staff was here, as well as the national team scouting. So very impressive, the legacy stuff that we did. The three clinics we held, the minor hockey, the school visits were outstanding, the junior host mini-games, even the singer of the national anthem, a young girl got to sing the national anthem, and our green locker teams were awesome. So I think, I'm just going to leave it at that for now, I think we're going to come in as a delegation, we'll have encounter from their perspective of what they saw in their support that we were able to get from them. And I think if there is one thing we could say about that, is without that ability to have that working relationship, I think it's so big that just a regular minor hockey would not have been able to pull that off, so we were able to do some good work there. I'll report, I'll repair our report out on the Hockey Canada side, I'll have information come from Hockey Canada, and Shante will report from the chair that you should be up here reporting as well. You know, Shante and I blew it out of the park in the sense of just finding ways to make it happen. And the weird part about it is, in twenty games, including the two exhibition games, I never was able to watch one game. We were always busy, and we always were pulled in each ways. I know that there's stories, and many, many, many stories you'll hear, and I can't even get any touch on them, but we summed it up by saying that if Ontario Women's Hockey League were happy, I'd collar them off here for Anne, and councillor Sue had a lot of opportunity to deal with them because of family connections. When the O W is happy, then Women's Hockey Canada's happy. So I'll leave any questions, but I think the presentation we're going to make will be more of a slideshow, but the pictures will tell thousands and thousands of stories.
Excellent, I'm looking forward to that, and I think what was mentioned over the last week, and today earlier in the meeting too, is a big thanks to everybody involved, and I know, as I mentioned, Shante and Tara and that, put a lot of hours into it, so thank you. And as was mentioned last night as well, with the appreciation dinner, it wouldn't have happened without basically the community rallying, whether it's sponsorship or volunteers. We always come forward in this community and do a bang-up job to do a Class A event. So on behalf of council too, we want to make sure we say thanks to everybody in the community for it, it was a great opportunity to have that event. Anything from council though, or questions? Councillor McFadden, go ahead.
Just thanks a lot, Barry, for yourself and Shante and all your staff and your team. Do you have anything else coming down the pipe that we should be looking forward to for national events out there?
I'd like to think that we would take that through a strategic planning process in January and get your approval before.
Who's the politician here? Thank you, well, good job.
But with that, he's always got ideas that he'll bounce off you.
I know, I had a bit of a hymn last night, but I won't say it. Thank you, Barry, and Shante.
Yeah, Councillor Kenny.
Yeah, Barry, I did hang out with those Ontario people for the whole duration, but I was just so impressed with your work and your leadership, and Shante, like, you did blow it out of the park, it was unbelievable. You're always there. I don't know when you slept or took time to eat, but it was a first-class, first-class event. Congratulations for doing that. But it isn't done without the expertise and talent that both you have and your team. Excellent.
You always say in those events, surround yourself with great people when things will happen, and anyone that's ever done a large event in our community knows that, so, there were days that I can honestly say that Shante probably wanted to choke me in place first, but that's the process that goes through, and, but I was absolutely amazed at the directors. Their skills and abilities, and if you've ever tried to accommodate that many people in a small little area, so, thank you, and I know that councillor Kenny has some great stories of family that I'm sure she's going to share with you, but that just, it's amazing how the circle comes around in sports sometimes, and that's the beauty of what we host, and the legacies of that.
Excellent. Well, thanks again, I'm looking forward to seeing the video and Cheryl having her Kleenex.
And I've heard them passing, I know Jim has been passing to you, you know, the local media had a great opportunity, and I know they all took, you know, the chance to do, I saw the video last night, it's on Facebook, so give a seat. Council did a great job, that's how she summed it up really, probably captured the game, so, what we really want to bring to you next time is the legacy stories, so.
Perfect, thanks a lot, Barry. So with that, that's the end of committee the whole, and on a great note, and so we'll go to sixteen one then, which is a motion to recess to the closed. So councillor Schuman and councillor Malkinson, all those in favor? Opposed, and it is carried, and so we'll take four or five minutes just to clear the room. Regular meeting of council packs at order, and where we left off now is we're going back to delegation, so we have under six two, so I think what I'll do, we have attendance for our presentation regarding sewer master plan alternatives over to Kevin, maybe put some, do some introduction, some background before we get ready to go.
Certainly, thanks everybody for coming. KWL Engineering was hired about a year ago, I think council awarded the RFP for the sanitary sewer master plan. Neil Whiteside is one of their lead engineers, he's up here today to present the final report to council, so, a great opportunity to go through everything, we've got a number of slides, there's some numbers, some graphs, some information, and what I would encourage is that if there's any questions at all along the way, please ask. We want to keep it interactive and make sure that council understands what they see, and we'll go from there. Higher, you want some power button?
I'll get them both in evil eye when I come in this one.
Am I looking at seven point six here, is that what I'm doing?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
The speakers are laid down, take care of them.
All right, so what I'll do is, I'll just turn on the lights here, and then I'll turn it over to Neil.
Okay, all right. Thanks, so this is.
All right. Well, thanks Kevin, thanks for the opportunity to speak to council and explain what we've been doing of the sanitary sewer master plan. So the purpose of the plan was to develop an understanding of recent flooding events. In two thousand and eleven, there's a couple of flooding events that were potentially attributable to the sanitary sewer system. Review sewer condition, develop a plan to address the condition and capacity of the sanitary sewer system. And so the scope of our work was to complete a topographic survey of the system, including manhole locations and inverts, that would help us identify where everything is. We also did a flow monitoring program with four catchments, and we also added a reengage, which the city now owns, and it's installed here in the city hall. And there's a sanitary sewer model build, so again, that's what we understand, the physical and loading of the system. We developed a growth scenario, so, and that growth scenario was based on growth out to two thousand and twenty-eight, which matched what we did with the water DCC bylaw a couple of years ago, if you remember, we were involved with that. So we kind of tried to match it up to that, so it would be consistent. We did some new sewer inspections with our partner, our subconsulted C L Video, about twelve kilometers, and we also evaluated some previous work they did last year directly for the city. We did evaluation of the condition and capacity, we used using our sewer model and some other tools, and developed capital upgrades and options to select one for capacity, and then we also recommended some longer-term renewal programs based on some of the condition work. So this is our team here, myself, Mike Comnek was sort of my technical lead, and then Alan and Lo, and then some other people from Curral Lido. C L Video, Dan Frankur out of Fort St. John, he did the sewer inspections, the camera work, and then S F E did the flow monitoring station installs. We use Flowworks for data storage analysis, and then Northern Rockies Engineering helped us out with the topographic survey of all the manholes. So just before I get too far, just a few acronyms that'll come up time and time again. So I N I is probably the important one, which means inflow and infiltration, and I've got a slide coming up on that. Population equivalence, which we use, which is capita, population plus equivalent amounts of I C I, that based on flows. And then we use the word base sanitary flow to talk about what we see for dry weather flow, which is what should, quote-unquote, should be in the pipe, and then peak wet weather flow is when we, what we get on top of that during rain events.
Question, what does I C I stand for?
Uh, sorry, industrial, commercial, and institutional uses.
True.
Yeah. So here's a slide of where typical inflow and infiltration sources come. There's roof drainage connections, we didn't see too many of those, but sometimes those can be indirect connections with the foundation drains, and then the foundation drains can be sometimes connected up to, and I understand that has historically been practice in Dawson Creek. And then these, sometimes you might have faulty crossconnections between the storm system and the sanitary system, and we don't think we have any of those, but that fact that only takes a few of those to really cause huge problems. And then also, there's the condition of the sewer itself, and you can get problems at manholes and problems at joints and cracks along the pipe itself. And here, inflow sources are in red, so those are the direct ones that come just during rain, and then the blue ones are infiltration sources, which are sort of more typical year-round sort of weeping type events. year-round sort of weeping type events. So just a uh a little overview of the system, uh the Dawson Creek system here. The uh sewer lagoons are down here. Um the airport service separately, it pumps directly to the lagoons, and then everything else goes into the uh the main lift station here. The main pump station is pumped into the lagoons, and then following this sort of orange line back, that's the main trunk sewer. Um and it, which which picks up all the flow. This area, this areas to the north here, part of it comes down through this connection and this connection, part of it through this fifteenth street connection, some of it seventeenth and some of it further up here. So, sort of, that's sort of the general system, and there's a few outlines, uh lift stations that service uh those those spots. And s- a couple spots outside Dawson, Dawson Creek proper. So in terms of loading, uh this is sort of existing residential, commercial loading, and just even though uh this, one thing to note here is is the amount of of commercial institution and institutional industrial is quite quite high to compared to what we see with other other communities, that's part of uh Dawson Creek being a a regional center, but it's also has to do with your your residential water use is actually quite low, so um. So we get twenty thousand people, uh population equivalents. And then our growth is probably another is another fifty, what we've allowed is another fifty percent on top of that, and that's spread out as as pre your OCP. So um to start of the program here, we realized we needed to get some better flow data. Um so in this year, we 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 uh put up four flow stations, and they're, they c- cover these catchments, these colored catchments. Um and then we actually moved one site to, this was site two, and we moved it down here to pick up, to see what was going on with this this little area here. And the flow monitoring was really successful this year, because we we actually picked up, there was a a, I'm sure you maybe you don't remember, but June this year, there was a pretty big storm, not an enormous storm like two thousand eleven, but it was a pretty big storm, it was a good event to pick up. And we just got that flow monitoring just in time, so it was really good, we had some good data showing what the flows were uh coming through those catchments for that for that event. This is what we saw for for dry weather flows, so this is a week in May, um prior to that storm. And and I'll just draw your attention to the scale here, it's basically zero to ten liters a second, this just happens to be site three. And you see it's fairly repeatable, day to day, um Saturday, Sunday's a little bit different than the rest of the week, but um that's what we got. Um using, we we took that information from all four sites, and we also looked at what was coming out of the main lift station, and we got a a base sanitary flow of a hundred and sixty liters per population equivalent, per day, which compares to your water system, which is a hundred and eighty liters per population equivalent per day, which is a good check, that that kinda lines up. It's kind of what we'd expect to be within ten percent or so of that.
So and just so I know so that ten, fifteen percent would be the sales of water that could be for gardens or for lawns that wouldn't be captured necessarily in the sewer system then?
Yeah, although this water-based demand would have been excluding the the summer irrigation season, so it would have been more uh potential service, obviously other sources on account of our water, those could be uh hydrant uses of water, could be uh other leaks on the service system, on like private side service system, that that that's the thing. But not typically not lawn watering, because we took that out.
That would be a higher gap.
Yeah, it'd be a bigger gap if it was in the summer, if you include all the summer usage, it would be a bigger gap, yeah. Yeah. And then here's what we got uh during the June storm here, so again, unfortunately this can't really s- the important numbers are off the side there, you can't really read them, but um let me just put the scale there. So the top here, actually, I'll just, the top is the the, this is the rain intensity coming off the top here, so here's a little bit of rain, and a little bit more rain, and a little bit more rain. Um so this is what we were seeing before the storm, this is for the same site, site three. And again, zero to ten liters a second about. And then we get a little bit of rain, we get a little bit of a peak here, and then the more and some more rain, we get another big peak and another big peak. And this goes all the way up to about sixty-five liters a second, so this is, you know, your your average here is about five liters a second. Our peak is ten times that, so it's a quite a dramatic amount of inflow infiltration. Um it's, it happens. It's systems of of this age and stuff, that's not unexpected, unfortunately. Here's just a, this is just a summary of some of the events we got, just to show that the June event we we got this year was a was a little bit smaller. This is the sort of the 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 peak r- the twenty-four hour rainfall we we had in June, forty millimeters for this one event. So that compare compares to fifty-four millimeters, June twenty-fourth last year, and fifty millimeters July eighth. Those storms were also preceded by a lot of rain before and after, so they were more serious events than 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 that number, an extra twenty percent, what do you think?
Just a question, just just to make sure that uh I'm following this uh fairly accurately.
Yes. Yes.
That uh that that graph you just showed illustrated that when there's heavy rainfall at this uh location three, I think you call it.
Yeah, and and all the locations, that was just typical, yeah.
Well, so that, so at all locations,
Yeah.
there's incredible infiltration through the into the sewer system from the uh storm sewer system, which is a lot of leakage.
Uh yeah, where it's from is is a is a good question, it could be from the storm sewer system, could be from uh foundation drains, uh could be road run off, a bunch, many different sources, but yes, there, that is what's happening during this.
And that, and you presumably gonna tell us you track the sources?
Uh well, not not, jump ahead, not not so much, actually. But but uh but we'll get to that.
Okay.
Um and then just shows there were a few other events we picked up this year, that they they weren't near as significant. Um it was a pretty dry summer, but we did we did pick them up, and we saw there was various levels of responses to those, and that helped us define how how the water came in. One thing in terms to uh go to uh Charlie, right?
Yeah.
To your question, is it, if you look at the response here, it's it's not, um, where's my pointer? The uh the response is fairly quick, which which would make, which makes us, uh there's certain categories of, it's more inflow than infiltration um that we saw in these storms.
You mean the response from the time this rain falls out of the sky to its found in our system?
Yeah, it's reasonably quick, yeah, yeah, reasonably quick, yeah.
Is is. We were seeing, I think on some of those charts, uh twenty minutes, half hour before, from the time that the rain fall to the time that you're starting to see it in the system.
Yeah, you can you can, you need to see on this this.
So th- there is um quite a rapid inflow, you use the word inflow? What is, how do you define inflow as opposed to infiltration?
Difference between inflow and infiltration?
Oh.
Yeah.
So yeah, so inflow sources are things like uh roof leaders are directly directly connected, as opposed to infiltration, which is a uh a sewer that's got a crack in it and then trench water's kinda seeping in from groundwater gradually.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, so that just shows the thing, so then then we we came up with with INI rates here. Um these won't necessarily mean anything to you, but it's just to sh- these these numbers are 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 compared to in your in your uh bylaw, your design bylaw, you'd be designed for fifty-six hundred liters per hectare per day. So these numbers of twenty to fifty-four thousand are are much, much higher than that. And we've got five-year numbers and ten-year's numbers, these are projected based on the the intensity of rainfall. Sort of extrapolated from what we saw, the event we saw in June, of course, wasn't a ten-year event, it was a five-year event, it was something small than that, about a maybe a two-year event.
June of this year.
June of this year.
Yeah, June of this year.
June of this year, as opposed to last year, which were more like ten-year events.
Well, most communities size for the five-year events of like what we had this year, the two-year was fine.
Yeah, you're. Yeah, so so you you're you're required to size for a five-year. So it's not, it's not really a choice per se, um by by the like the provincial regulations that they've ever had. So if if you're constantly over having overflows on storms that are less than five-year events, then that would be something that you definitely would be required to 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 deal with, for sure. Um so this is just a a quick loading summary, this is what we end up putting in the in the model here. Um just to draw attention to two numbers, the peak sanitary flow, which is the flow you get, um it's basically the base sanitary flow at eight AM in the morning, like a peak during the day, peak usage during the day. Uh currently is about fifty-five liters a second, and then we're we're seeing INI rates of uh ten times that spread through, based on the catchment that we look at.
So what he's saying is on a day where we have no rain, but it's supper hour or it's breakfast hour, we see fifty-five liters, but on a day where we have rainfall events, we're seeing si- an extra six hundred and twenty-five liters into the system.
Not, yeah, not just any rainfall event either, that's a a ten-year rainfall event.
So last, twenty-eleven.
Last year, twenty-eleven, yeah, twenty-eleven type event, yeah.
And that was a one-in-ten-year event?
Last year it was.
Two of them within, two of them within a few weeks of each other.
Two of them within.
Two of them within a week.
Yeah, and 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 there's a few things about the response to the system I should go on to about just ju- certain, the amount of rain is one thing, but then the the saturation of the soil affects what what you what you get in terms of response too.
Sure, yeah.
So sometimes you won't necessarily get the same response from the same intensity and storm. Anyways. Um this is a a a map from the sen- the m- the master plan, and I'm just gonna blow it up a little bit. This shows, this is an assessment of of how the system's performing uh right now. Um here's here's our sewer lagoons just kinda off the corner there, um there's a main lift station. The 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 yellow here indicates that the capacity of the trunk is exceeded, i.e. the gravity capacity's exceeded, so it's starting to surcharge, which means it's going above the the crown of the pipe, that's what that means. So, in this area, this might not be causing any any real problems on its own. Um but as you go further back, it's backwatering some areas where the where the where the sewer is is shallower. Um and then as you get back here, it gets further and further, and then these areas are backwatered. The 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 little yellow areas are areas where we had reports of insurance claims from last year. Just last year or a couple of years.
Yeah, yeah, from twenty-eleven, uh yeah, you can see those shaded areas, so that's consistent with what Neil's pointing out here, is that those areas where we had reports of backups or or flooding is also coinciding with the areas that the model shows the pipe has exceeded capacity.
Yeah. And there's a few outliers, like out here, you see there's a there's a spot here, it's reported, which which we don't necessarily know that that would, that wouldn't necessarily say that was due to the sewer. Um but these ones here, it is consistent. Um and here it's sort of backwatering uh of the trunk is being the problem. This one here is uh is is actually this, the Eighth Street sewer, just above the trunk is 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 undersized, is causing problems of its own. Here, there's a little local problem as well with with the size of this sewer here.
Fifteenth Street.
Fifteenth Street, yeah. And then and then we've got an air, a issue with with this with this sewer as well, it's it's quite flat and and is causing some issues too. Further up here, we've got some issues shown, we didn't see anything, so there there's an area where where it's right now, you'll see for later on, it's an area we've we've identified that we need to investigate further, but we've tentatively set aside some sort of lower priority uh projects to 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 identify those areas, to deal with those areas.
Yeah, and that one area, you know, it's it's, oh by the golf course, so it's not populated per se, it's not attached at all, so that might be why we don't see the problems either, because it's not affecting any of our.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's true. Um yeah, so there's a just sort of a quick overview of what the model's telling us with existing systems, existing loads, what 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 we would see in terms of problems. Um this is a a HGL graph of the of the trunk sewer, so hydraulic grade lines, HGLs. Um starting here at the lift station, and this this black set of lines is the actual pipe itself. Um this is uh elevation on the side here, this is the actual ground profile. Spend a little of the time on this, so it makes sense here. And then this is the dotted line below is the sort of assumed basement elevation around that, around that there, so. And this, so we go from one fifteenth avenue, second section, one fourteenth, Eighth Street section, and then further east, or sorry, further west, further west till you get to seventeenth. So the that's the the that's the sort of the, and then on top of that, we put these lines here, the first line is the green line, which is a five-year INI HGL, and then there's the uh another line, this is five-year, another five-year line and five-year or ten-year existing and then ten-year future. So this is the HGLs we see on, we would see along the the trunk sewer. And you can see really a trunk sewer like this should be operating along just full pipe, that's really what you'd like to see. Any surcharging like this is not necessarily desirable. And this 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 happens to be the Chamberlain uh Drive uh ground elevation and uh assumed basement elevation right there. So that would show that we're s- we are seeing problems there.
So yeah, what you're seeing there is that, you know, in a even in a five-year event, which we should be designed for, we're surcharging that trunk line.
Yeah.
That's the green line, that's directly above the pipe, so. And uh you know, as the event worsens, you see that the that hydraulic grade line comes up until the point where it gets high enough that it affects basements.
Yeah. And 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 what we haven't allowed for here is any uh any, we haven't allowed for the anything being wrong with the pipe, we assume it's a good pipe, so if there's grobbles or anything else in there, that's that's gonna further make the problem worse. Um so that's just a, just maybe I'll just leave, I'm gonna go on to the condition part now, and then I'm gonna come back to the plan. So if there's any question about the hydraulic loading or the assessment of the of the hydraulics, if you can take those down or move ahead?
I just uh if I could, I, you talked about inflow and.
Infiltration, yeah.
Yeah, and then you had the graphs there, but whenever there were, and there, when we had these significant rain events, almost immediately, I think you said twenty minutes, the sewer line was charged or was 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 in- was compromised. But you can't say with certainty that that line being compromised was caused by the rain, is that what I heard you say?
No.
No, 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 yeah, we know it is, I'm just saying, uh there's a there's a there's a variety of inflow sources, so I can't say it's all rainwater liters, or I can't say it's all uh faulty manhole covers or all, or what percentage it is, that, we haven't done that specific work before.
No, but one way or the another, whether it's whether it's whether it's.
Yeah, it's coming in, it's definitely coming in, yes, uh yeah, yeah.
Whether it's rainwater coming down my roof into my sump pump into the sewer,
Yeah.
or whether it's going down a manhole cover, or whether it's going down a grate in front of my house, it's still.
Still rainwater.
It's still rainwater.
Yeah.
And and I think what we're trying to to, the picture we're trying to paint here is that it it's it's broad across the community.
Yeah.
It's no one thing, so hence our strategy to fix the problem may be different.
Yeah, yeah.
As opposed to, when we originally went into this, what we thought we would find is maybe a few areas that had some inflow infiltration problems that we could target for repairs.
Yeah. Right.
That would then take this load off us, but what we're seeing, as the plan is now complete, that it is a very broad uh brush across the community.
Right.
So uh you have to deal with that and maybe in a different way, i- i- you know, so that's, I think, where we, that our deal is trying to get to.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think the the one thing that really leads to that is that there's, the the in addition, this, the sanitary sewer system is paralleled by a storm sewer system
Right, yeah.
in most communities, and and the storm sewer system in in Dawson Creek isn't, uh there's a lot of shallow storm sewers, they're just picking up catch bases and that kind of thing, they're not necessarily picking up foundation drains, so.
And there's a lot of areas in town where they don't have storm sewers.
Yeah. And that's right, and there's some that don't have any.
Yeah.
We just have, we just have a sewer system, all the storm water goes into sewer, we don't have a parallel system.
Yeah, so it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it, in a way, it could, you know, sort of a combined, in those areas, you, that'd be what you call a combined sewer.
And then there's three or four, I think, spots along the creek where the storm sewer flows into it.
Yeah.
We can't just open the gate wider and that wouldn't help the problem, or would somebody be?
That's, that that, again, that's the storm sewer, so that's that's separate system.
That's water we already got away from the sanitary.
Yeah.
So it's already open and full and nothing's restricting the storm sewer, or is the sewer line itself? It's it's water getting into the sanitary system.
Yes.
Via perimeter drains like you're weeding files.
Yeah.
Um poorly graded foundations where you, like you say, you have your eaves trough.
Yeah.
Right down, so that exasperates the problem. Uh you've got water coming through manhole lids, maybe through cracked. Uh you've got water coming through manhole lids, maybe through cracked manholes. Um we don't believe that there is uh very many true cross connections where the stor- uh a catch basin maybe goes into a sanitary line. We don't believe that's the case. But when you look at all those perimeter drains in the community and all those, it adds up very quickly.
Yep, thank you.
We we don't we don't have those perimeter drains into the s- system anymore, right?
We changed our building bylaw last to January this year to eliminate that. So now what we have is uh perimeter drains, but with sump pump, sump pump to surface out in your backyard or whatever. So we've eliminated, so we can at least control that moving forward. But uh to deal with forty five hundred properties in the community where this already exists, um what we're saying, I think as you see, will go forward is that uh the feasibility of changing those forty five hundred properties is pretty daunting, so it's probably easier to change uh the capacity of our systems.
Yeah, yeah, that's 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 exactly right. Um so before we get onto the solutions, I thought we'd 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 take a little of the condition work we did so that that kind of feeds into it as another, another input. Um um a hundred and seven kilometers of of s- of sanitary sewer in 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 Dawson Creek, of which uh half of it is is clay sewer or vitrified clay. It's a just a sewer material type. Uh twenty nine percent PVC, ten percent uh this is asbestos cement and eleven percent other and this other is typically uh reinforced concrete. It's not too much else. Um so we've done some video work. This is just the the blue here shows areas that have that have been done and and there's some work, this is up till September and our uh CL video did some work in October, November, which we haven't analyzed yet, so we did a little bit more work in the downtown here. And so a little bit more of com- cleaning, some some work up in this area too has been done. So this this is sort of a in somewhat incomplete just because the I just picked up the the hard drive full of all the the video for October, November this morning, so. Um anyways, so ser- uh we're just gonna go through some of the the a little bit of a a little video and some pictures just to give you an idea of what what this stuff looks like. Um this is what was done. The sewers are videoed and the defects coded and there's a there's a set methodology for doing that. Um and before the videos were taken, the root cutting and flushing was completed, so you actually don't see some of those problems because it's sort of been dealt with. Um and that actually adds its terms of information we gather from this uh inspection program is really valuable, but also the actual root cutting and flushing that that is done as part of the program has its own value in terms it's an O and M me uh measure. Um So it 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 the the information we get has two 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 valuable purposes. One is to provide a a ma- methodology for planning and there's sometimes we find serious defects that need to be be fixed right away to save ourselves, you know, potential bigger 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 problems. Um I hope this is I hope this is gonna play. This is a this is just a little video. I wonder if we wanna maybe I'll tell you what, if we can see this video, show of hands, anybody?
Yeah, sure.
Interested?
I don't know if we need the sound effects to go on, but I can hear them.
Be quiet.
Just for short.
I still don't know. Are we done eating?
Uh. I noticed anything?
Going down the drain.
What size line would this be? Which one?
Uh probably eight or ten or.
Eight or ten inch.
I think this would be uh I'm gonna mine it was really easy to
Nice, alright.
Oh, anyways, I've got a bunch of video, I've got a bunch of pictures anyways, so maybe we'll just forego that.
Sorry, but no.
Um so these are just um I show some operation maintenance defects to start with. This one is uh roots coming in through the joint. This is a joint here. And that's coded a a a score of one, so you'll see it in as soon as sanitary master plan, there's just a summary of all these and gives you an idea of what it is. This is a score of two. This would have been removed as part of the work, but it's an intrusion.
These are clay pipes, is that right?
Yeah, these these are clay pipes, that's right. Here's an encrustation. This is comes from mineral deposits, again, typically at the joints. Uh I can't that's an called an infill dripper, so there's some water dripping and it's kind of blown up too too close to see, but anyways, I guess it's a score of three. Here's a serious encrustation, so that's same as the one before, but you can see it's really blocking up.
It's probably around the service connection. It looks like so there's a service.
Yeah, it looks like there's a little PVC pipe coming in here.
So the I mean, that's a good example. Obviously where these encrustations, correct me if I'm wrong, Neil, but that obviously water is in infiltrating there to create those in the first place.
Yeah, that's right. They wouldn't, yeah.
So it's an example of where water can get into the system just leaping in, you know, and then when you get saturated soils, of course, you're gonna get more. There's stereo minerals that are perfecting, looking into that.
Yeah. Yeah. And 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 what the other bad thing with this obviously is it 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 obstructs the pipe, right? So this 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 would reduce your capacity beyond what the model would say for this particular sewer. Um now, so those were all uh those pictures were all O and M scores, so those basically meaning there'd be something that can be fixed um fairly fairly uh cheaply, I suppose. Um as opposed to a structural s- structural problems, which then becoming after a structural fix. This is the again, this is structural score of one. This is really nitpicky thing, some some surface damage to the clay pipe. Um s- score of one, also you see there's a little crack here. Uh this is a score of two. This is where it's always put in a point rec- we put in a point repair and then the point repair is sagged.
Mm-hmm.
Uh here's here's a a longitudinal crack. Score of two again. Uh here's a s- a little more serious. I'm not su- surprised this is just a two. The the scale goes one to five. This is a circumferential fracture. See, there's a fracture there in the pipes at the bottom. That pipe's gonna start uh dropping away. Here's uh multiple cracks along the the line. Here's a a visible hole. Again, it's zoomed in a little bit too much and this gets when you when you see the soil visible here, you you that's that's a real problem because that'll start eating away uh and that soil will start getting pulled in. And then that'll cause more infiltration, but also uh it it can cause sinkholes. Here's a structural failure of a bit of pipe. So this again, this is this is a five. This is this is bad. This is the type of thing that needs need to needs to be dealt with.
Is that because it can eventually if it will just collapse in on itself and block it off probably completely?
Yeah, that's 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 one thing. Uh the other problem is that this this soil is already some of some soil has already come into the pipe. As more and more soil comes in, then you create a a unsupported weakness in the road or uh and that can lead to 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 a sinkhole eventually if left un- unintended. And here's here's one that's gone pretty progressed a little bit further. See, there's there's the edge of the original pipe and then this is just all soil. And it's sort of you can see this has just been sort of been the the flow is just slowly digging that out a little bit. So of of the sewers we we looked at, uh and we were looking at mostly uh the clay pipe. Um we had eighty eight with no defects, so that's good, and then uh quite a few here, maybe seventy five with sort of serious structural defects. In terms of by pipe material, we have I we have we've done we concentrate on the pipe, clay pipe. Um so we don't have much info on the PVC and the AC pipe, but what info we do have shows it's it's generally quite good. So the AC sixty one percent is no no defects at all. PVC eighty three percent of it's no defects. Obviously those are the PVC is obviously the newer pipe too, so you'd expect that. Uh the concrete, we haven't we only did two hundred meters, so I wouldn't even look at that column. But the the clay pipe here, we we see quite a few serious defects and 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 twenty three percent are the of the most serious sort.
And the clay pipe is circa?
Fifties, sixties.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Clay tile, yeah, very popular and it the issue with it is that it doesn't have a tight uh joint of water. So pipes were just laid in and and they had a bell end and just were putted up against it. Uh depending on how they were installed, um they were shorter lengths, so you get a lot of ups and downs, three foot joints.
Three feet.
And then roots just have a heyday with it because they can there's no gasket to keep them out. And um if there's any shifting, it clay is is somewhat brittle. It can, as you see, it'll crack and breaks.
And just the number of joints compared to a PVC pipe, which would be uh s- twenty feet long or fifteen feet long, it yeah, then then you have just so many more areas where you can have problems. And 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 if there's local sagging, the pipe will sag as opposed to a twenty foot length. It needs to be quite a bit of settling over a longer length.
And back in the day when they uh did service connections to the surveying that was VCT, like you saw that one with the pipe and all that encrustation. The reason that probably happened is that they bust a hole in the side of the pipe, they stick another pipe in it and if they didn't seal it up properly around that, it was just an opportunity again for root swat or everything you get in there. There's a little longer nature, you know, with the with that material, but.
Yeah. Um so the recommendations that came out of that, there's there's there'll be some immediate point repairs in action that that of course to to Kevin and Sean to deal with. But then there's the the uh we recommend a a a clay sewer and replacement, I mean, re- renewal might be the better word because there's lining technologies we can use to to minimize costs. We don't necessarily have to we don't necessarily have to dig up the whole sewer. We can we can do lining programs or city can do lining programs. Um one thing we haven't done and 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 really I the the we'd like to get the trunk sewer inspected in two thousand thirteen. And um I even thought about doing it this year as part of the sanitary sewer master plan budget, but uh I thought it was important to get a little bit more data on existing uh the the other piping, but seeing everything now, you'll see that the trunk sewer capacity is an issue, so we definitely want to make sure what our solution uh we'll get to that, but you'll see it's important. Um the the continued sewer inspection program um for for clay is is a priority. And and because we have so little info on the concrete, we'll get some because the the trunk sewer itself is concrete, so hopefully we'll get some next year. And and the sewer inspections um really are a good tool for maintaining the and prioritizing what needs to be replaced, so I think it's money well spent. Um so so that's the condition. We've looked at the capacity, so now we have to develop some capacity upgrading options uh taking into consideration the the condition of the sewer. Um we looked at three. One was the just up upgrading the trunk capacity itself. One was uh doing a bypass. So we just remove some of the flow from the trunk. Another was a a peak flow storage to to hold some of the the flow and spread it out. Um let's just quickly go through them. This is option A. So option A, we the red is the the new sections of pipe, so so here we show uh and the blue is a new force main. So the the force main itself from the lifts main lift station will have to be upgraded for capacity, so would the lift station, so would the trunk sewer back this way. The Eighth Street trunk needs to be upgraded. This piece here needs to be upgraded. This little local area needs to be upgraded. And then there's a couple other smaller areas that are basically the same for all the options. So that's option A. And then uh option B is to leave the trunk and to build a relief sewer or a bypass sewer here. And then as it works out quite handily, from this point, we can flow by gravity through a pressure sewer straight to the sewage lagoons, so we don't have to pump this flow and that gets us away from a uh a lift station upgrade here and a force main upgrade here. This routing is 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 preliminary. We could there's a bunch of different options here. Maybe we could find a shorter route. Um I just sort of the preliminary. Um the other one is is at the airport. We've got a I've highlighted this all in red. I'm not proposing to replace all the sewer. It's just I highlighted it's we've we've got a problem with the airport's uh lift station capacity and either we need to upgrade the lift station or we have to look at some INI reduction measures in this area. So we've budgeted for that in the plan. Option C is adding it's option C similar to option A, but instead of upgrading the trunk sewer the whole way, we've added some storage tanks here and here. Uh and these would just bold flow until we uh pass um until a storm had passed. And and this is a method that's used in other municipalities. It's it's uh well, it just turns out in this case, it's not cost effective. It's they're not globally have to hold, if they'd have to be just too big, um and then it wouldn't be cost effective. And they have O and M issues with them. Another thing is we've got because it's sort of a widespread problem, we don't get full value out of them. Like we still need to do this this upgrade here on Eighth Street because we don't have a tank there, so that have you know, just the problems are too spread out. It'd be nice to if we all had all problems in one area, we could put a uh a big reservoir and it might the 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 economics might work out as it being a good option. But as it turned out, it was not. Um another idea was to look at INI as a reduction option. We've already spoke about this kind of at length. Um but just just to indicate that flow monitoring's problems are widespread and the the fact that you don't have uh storm sewers or there's shallow storm sewers sewers for most of Dawson Creek makes the 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 cost effectiveness, cost effectiveness of an INI program uh problematic. And then another other thing to to consider is is just the time. Um because it's such a widespread program, we we'd 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 be starting uh to run into time constraints in terms of getting a solution. So as a result, I wouldn't recommend that as a primary solution. There is some spots like around the airport, we might wanna look at doing something like an I localized INI program. And I think INI reduction is a long term goal to to allow for uh development beyond the plan's forecast. It's it's a good goal. So assessing the options, um we recommend option B, which is the which is the bypass. Uh it's the lowest capital cost. It actually wasn't really even that close. It was the lowest by quite a bit. Uh and and then it was less public inconvenience than option A and it should have lower O and M costs than option C, which is the 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 peak flow. Option A and option C, by the way, worked out to about the same cost. And the that option adds it does add a level of of redundancy because we'll have a a way of uh uh bypassing some of the flows, so we can deal with the trunk sewer down the road if we need to. Any question on that or?
What do you mean by redundancy? Sorry, I didn't follow that.
Well here's option B. Um we're gonna be diverting sewer sewage here, here and here.
Mm-hmm.
And so all this fl- area, flow area, all this catchment could still go in the old direction while we're doing this work.
Yeah.
And then it convert conversely in the it it gives us a little bit of we have two ways to get that that sewage to 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 the sewage lagoon.
Okay.
It doesn't doesn't really add much redundancy down down here. True it's not true to true redundancy because all this area still needs to to come on the the old trunk sewer.
Um I just wanted it was about five million eight hundred thousand dollars was for uh option B, is that right?
That.
We'll be discussing that as soon as the presentations will begin.
Yeah, yeah, this is this is the breakdown here. There's the pressure sewer.
Okay.
Um and then there's the the bypass. Um and that's to Fifteenth Street. The other the other high priority items were uh this connection to the to the new bypass sewer and that was a that's something that's gotta be tackled anyway, just a small amount. Um and then there's local upgrades we've set aside. We know we've got an issue and all the problems, we know we've got an issue here and that's sort of a all the options need to deal with those is that that is a separate little little problem.
And uh thirdly, uh time, you said that option B was the quickest?
Yes.
Less less uh intrusion.
Out out Less intrusion, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I it it's it's yeah.
I the the key there is that option A, you're gonna replace trunk lines
Yeah.
on Eighth Street, up the middle of Eighth Street. You're also gonna be going through Kim Park and down that by the high school and that way for that other portion of the trunk line. Yeah, the the disruption would be fairly significant and the restoration costs, that that's what drives that up, so.
Mm.
Uh the bypass uh option certainly looks uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, and depth of sewer becomes like even though it looks like similar amounts of of sewer, um the depth of sewer on the trunk, it's very deep. And obviously that
Adds cost.
Adds cost, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So I noticed in the option B, how all the work is on the north side of town.
Mm-hmm.
So how does that help, let's say alleviate a situation at Chamberlain?
Uh.
Stops the water from getting there.
Stops the water from coming-
If you could ask that.
Red directing the flow.
There we go, this is this is how it does, it redirects the flow, this is this is the HGL, I, this is, it's almost like you had a cue, had a cue from um, thi- this 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 is the same, this is a similar graph you showed earlier, but this is, that red line was on from the previous graph. And now these other ones are um doing portions of work, so if you look down at the bottom, so uh thi- this this line here is doing option B up to Eighth Street, and then the yellow line there is doing to Fifteenth. And the green line was doing to Seventeenth, and that actually, we took that out of the plan, because d- doing the section from Fifteenth to Seventeenth, there was no, it didn't really add much value, it didn't divert much flow, so initially we thought we'd have to do that, and we looked at it, we said, don't need to do that. So this shows what happens, it is what somebody else said, is you're diverting, we're we're just taking away that flow, so then there's enough capacity.
So they're reducing the hydraulic grade line um down over two meters.
Yeah.
So now, instead of the pipe surcharging, you've got the trunk main flowing as it should, by diverting that actually.
Yeah, so, yeah. Uh, see at Eighth Street here, basically all these lines are pretty much parallel in terms here, but the real problem is this this lower part of the trunk sewer is really overcharged, and 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 as soon as we start diverting sewage, we bring that HGL down, so.
So basically as the northern part of the town continues to grow, that
Right.
will end up going into that proposed new system, which would-
Yeah, well, yeah, you say, so as growth happens, the 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 existing trunk sewer, uh as growth happens there, the existing trunk sewer wouldn't be affected, because, yeah.
But I mean, that, cause that's why we wanted this look down, cause as the northern part of town grows, is that gonna affect the Chamberlain Drive area and that, and so that's why we have to look at.
Uh-huh.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah.
So what we we we'll be solving an existing issue and also providing an opportunity for growth without those impacts.
Assuming that a one in ten year event is a one in ten year event. Uh, nothing man designs is going to overcome a one in hundred year event. Um, and if one in ten year events become one in five year events, we're still fine, it's when they get beyond that that we're gonna come in issue.
I've seen last, uh, twenty eleven was higher than a one in ten, I don't know why I thought it was.
American Canada listed at one forty, but I guess that's all subjective.
Well, it's all localized.
Yeah, it is.
We're talking about what we saw right in Dawson Creek.
Well, no, actually, the the big thing is 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 the duration of the, it might be one in forty year event for uh a three-day period, but your storm sewer reacts in hours, so we kinda have to look at what is its return period over like the ten, the ten, it's the intensity of rain is what really drives it, so you, that's that's-
A question behind you.
Yes.
Just to think.
Okay.
When you talk about one in ten year
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Chamberlain Drive's been four times in eleven years. So I mean, this is a, this is, like, you gotta start to prioritize here.
I think that's what we have to do.
As you talk about one in ten, that it's it's totally irrelevant, we've had four in eleven years.
Okay, that's why we hired experts to, so I apologize, but technically the gallery's not supposed to speak, so.
That's why we went through this process as a council, I expect experts to give us advice. But in it, but in response, the advice that we're getting is that the issues that Mr. Heath, uh, Mr. Hanson are dealing with on Chamberlain are not related to a bad pipe or a bad design, they're related to lack of capacity, we have to do something about the capacity in the trunk, or those problems are gonna continue.
We were hoping we'd find just an easy
Uh, bypass solution or a local, what uh, you know, we're defining as localized issues, it's not a localized issue on Chamberlain, it's a system-wide issue.
Yeah, that that's that's correct.
Ken, so we'll just let you finish this then, the lines system, the lining.
Okay, yeah, no.
So we still have to get some recommendations and some voting on it.
Fair enough, um, so uh, so so this is just this the summary then, did I skip over a slide, I think I did, oh yes, there was a couple other problems that we shouldn't just skip over too lightly, there there is some really small local sewer regreations to be done, uh, we'd recommend, and then there's the airport lift station where we, historically, we we know we do have some issues, um, and our modeling shows we've got an issue. Um, but we're we're, we'd like to do some more mo- some monitoring there, and then I better understand whether there's an INI solution for that that area, cause it's it's not, it's a lot of area connected with not too much, uh, so I think there might be a solution there. Um, and then Alaska Highway Section, again, confirm the flows and conditions of that, it's 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 a very flat, this is right on the western edge of town, and there's very little uh, in the way of connected population, but there's a lot of connected area, and that having a lot of connected area shows we have problems, we haven't evaluated the flows or anything. So then a summary, there's there's option Bs recommended, it's about eight, nine dollars, of which five is the high priority projects. Um, there's also sewer renewal program, we recommend, um, and then flushing and video inspection, we, this is one thing I I I shouldn't really go over too quickly, the main trunk sewer, we haven't videoed it, and I, uh, if it's in really, really bad shape, then we should be thinking about doing something with it, I don't know that it is, I just, I I think this really is a high, before we move too far down the line of re- doing a bypass, we wanna make sure that that is in serviceable shape for twenty, thirty years.
And what was the um, was that the clay, is that s- that trunk?
No, it's concrete, it's it's a concrete sewer, um, yeah.
Concrete.
So we don't expect it's in as bad shape as the clay?
There's something we- Well, we expect it to be in better shape, but what, you know, I think one solution would be if we did find some issues with it, um, we could maintain the capacity, but look at a a relining of that perhaps, I don't know.
Yeah, you could you could line it, but lining it might reduce its capacity a little bit, so then you'd wanna make sure that our solution still works on option B. So I think it just, and that's all, and it just, it, before that i- is under construction, we should know this, uh, I just recommend that we know this condition of the main trunk sewer. Um, another thing is just some some sort of lower cost items, we we should have some permanent flow loggers at the main lift station and the airport lift station. Um, right now, we've got a flow meter at the main lift station, but um, we, the city, um, uh, has has on the main lift station, but it's just not recorded all the time, and it's not tied into the level, and it's just, it's just a little money to be spent there.
Is it, with the airport lift station, so is that, are we seeing like higher capacity there because of the development we have out there, so it's, there's more strain on that system now with that?
Yeah, I think the growth, and then obviously it's, we're seeing um some infiltration issues as well, it's causing it, so. It's all new pipe out there, it's all BBC, so um, I think what Neil was thinking is that there might be some opportunity, there might be some.
Just a number of connections is not that great.
Right.
And so you, there you might have, and there is a storm sewer system of sorts there, so uh, you ju- it might be just some small inflow, there should be, should be, could be some big inflows that are causing a problem, we could just deal with those and and hopefully not have to do a lift station upgrade.
Okay, and then just for clarity, on Alaska, that's just more a geographic issue, like there, it's too more flat than it is sloped towards the main system?
Again, it's a, it's a, it's only a few connections, but there's a lot of piping and a lot of connected area. Cause we talk about INI, inflow and infiltration, what what our basis for understanding is how much area is connected. And cause there's a lot of area connected, we show it as having a uh a big flow on the model, uh, more than that the pipe can 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 carry it, but
Okay.
but um, that may, that needs assessing, yeah.
Right, so and then the main trunk, so if we, so we're, option B bypassing, by doing that, we're not actually putting extra strain on our main trunk that you're saying we should look at? But we should look at it because of its age and and what the material it's made out of.
Well, if you're spending money doing your bypass of it, as, if you were gonna, if 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 was it, it's, I hate to be negative, but if it was really in terrible shape, then you might be thinking about replacing it, and if you'd already done the bypass, you'd be looking, you'd you'd you wouldn't wanna do that.
Okay, okay.
I'm look, I'm looking at this map here with the bypass, and the main trunk is the blue on there, is that it?
No.
Yeah.
The blue is uh out by the lagoons and out there.
Yeah, where's the main, where's this main trunk you're talking about?
Yeah, let's see if I can go back to a picture of the, there's option B, is that what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, the the main trunk sewer is, um, sorry, the blue pipe is slightly over top of it there, which is the proposed new. The dark, the dark red and blue are are proposed new, and the 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 blue indicates it's a it's a pressure pressurized sewer, as opposed to the red, which is a gravity sewer, gravity main, it's open to atmosphere. Um, here, uh, this is the, the yellow pipe is the main trunk.
Existing.
Existing main, existing main trunk, yes.
Existing.
Well, if you dump the whole North Hill into the bypass
Yes.
and then down into the blue that goes south
Yes.
the main trunk runs right by it.
Yeah, I I just don't wanna have to repump it, we could do that, actually, it was part, one thing we could look at doing, but then we'd have to repump it here.
Yeah, the advantage of that blue going right to the lagoons, counselor, is that it would bypass our lift station, um, and obviously save the pumping cost, but being that when we have these peak flows, the lift station is undersized, we would then be gaining capacity in the lift station without that would be doing a great, cause we would be diverting flows path, you know, around it.
But it it is a fair comment.
See, right-
Yes, it's a fair comment, we could we could terminate there, but then the lift station doesn't necessarily have the capacity to it, and then we could have lift station overflows to-
Put the red dot where the main truck goes into the bypass, exactly.
Fair, yeah.
So now even all that water, instead of coming down Seventh Street and Fifteenth Street into Chamberlain Drive, is coming down Alaska on the bypass. But right there, it's gonna bottleneck.
No, no, they're not connected.
Oh, they're not connected there, no, there's two two separate pipes.
You just said they're over, on the drive, looks like it's over there, but they're not.
Yeah, two. Yeah, they're they're meant to be, sorry.
Well, thank you, I missed that, I'm glad to hear that, because what would be the, what would be the point?
Yes, 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 very good, yes, yes, yes.
I guess I was having a senior's moment.
No, 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 that's that's all right, that's all right.
All right, carry on.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm not a math guy.
Well, we're all real clear now, I know.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, I think that was, that was, that was actually the, I think we've gone to the end here. Yeah.
Okay, turn the lights on, turn the lights on, yeah. How many wants to drop that too far?
Huh? It's good, it's good.
So we'll continue, I'll have time for media questions afterwards, if you don't mind, cause we wanna keep moving. And uh, so on that, we'll uh look to rest the council before we get back into the regular part of the agenda where we discuss this further, while we have the delegation, is there any further questions, maybe on the presentation? I know we asked quite a few while we were uh moving along, so I'm not sure if all your questions were answered, before we get into discussing recommendations.
I guess I do have a question, and uh, you you've you had up on one of your slides there, you know, sort of high priority.
Mm-hmm.
Five million plus. What uh rest, what distinguishes between high priority and the remaining work, I mean, eight millions for the total package.
Yeah, fair enough, um, it is a bit, they're-
Uh, what, how how did, how did you decide what is high priority, what is high priority as opposed to the remaining three, and the other supplementary question to that.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's best to do the whole thing at once, because it's more cost effective rather than reopening, is there any cost effectiveness with doing the whole thing at once as opposed to doing it in stages, versus the high priority first and doing the rest and such?
Yeah, so so high priority uh goes really, maybe that was even maybe not the the best way to to state it, but those projects that were, I called high priority, address things where the model shows there's uh a flooding issue, and it's confirmed by uh uh
Insurance.
Well, insurance records, yeah, and and so basically, we're really confident that those projects, those are real, and they're not just localized issues, they're they're real
Yeah.
uh, trunk capacity issues that that will continue to to be a problem. Some of the things, like I'd shown the airport lift station, um, I guess there's more work to be done there, to to say we're certain that that all that money needs to be spent, and 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 basically, what is the best solution for those those areas that's really just, had to done, flow monitoring. We only put so many flow monitors out in in any given time, we're we're quite lucky to get, and actually, I should say, we were really lucky to get that June storm, it was perfect for us, we could've just put it in, but anyways, uh, hope that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, well, let me, so my my understanding is that the five million plus, the high priority, based upon all your research and working observations, would take care should take care of overcapacity issues when in high rain four times.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, should should take care of the uh problems people have had with sewer back. And um, should put us in good stead as well for further development in the north part of the town.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions then for the delegation? No, okay, well, thanks Neil, thanks Kevin.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate all that information, that's lots to uh, lots to absorb, thank you for uh for doing all that.
Oh, no.
It was uh, it was good from a council perspective, obviously, we need to have that information, so we can make a proper decision.
All right.
Cheers.
Thank you.
Thank you. So on that then, uh, council, uh, we go now uh back in the agenda to seven six under reports, we vary the agenda again, back to that, sorry Tyra, we've been all over today. Uh, but we're now on seven six, and there is a recommendation uh from staff, um, in order to help with the prioritizing of this, so councillor Schuman.
So I move there a recommendation, report number twelve dash two six three from the director of infrastructure and sustainable development regarding the sanitary sewer master plan we received. And further, that staff be directed to prepare capital budgets for the forty thirteen, that includes a high priority upgrade identified in the sanitary sewer master plan. The lane, five million two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, second by councillor McFadden, and so on this now, further discussion then from council.
It's just, uh, it occurred to me, your worship, that uh, I think we're pretty much uh in step one of what's going to turn out to be a multi-year sewer job over the years, I mean, I think I saw the chart that said fifty percent is of the sewer lines are clay. And uh, so they probably deteriorate, all you have now is a hole through the place over here, so uh, I think we're in step one, and I guess we just need to make sure that we're doing it, starting off on the right foot, that's all, I think we are.
Well, thank you, and that's, that's why, if you remember last year and this year, when we were discussing it, it was one of our top priorities uh to look at.
Yep.
Um, the thing is, is we didn't want to just do this willy-nilly, and we didn't know where where or how to fix the problems, and that's why we had to hire this company to come in and give us some ideas, uh, looking at the entire system, so, um, you know, in hindsight, you know, you you wish, you wish it was as easy as saying there was two blocks that had to be fixed and solve the world's problems.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause this is, you know, when you look at, this is possibly seven, eight, nine million dollars to fix, uh, in saying that, uh, this, we're not unique, this is, when you go to the UBCM meetings, every single FCM meetings, every single uh council, the entire province and the entire country stands up and talks about having this exact same problem. And needing to have a a place to start, and unfortunately, there's no uh project, uh, sorry, no uh grants out there to help with this at this time, but uh, we keep looking.
And then, just one, uh, construction wise, should this proceed as quickly as possible through the budget process, what are we talking for construction, two summer, two seasons, one season?
Well, this, maybe I'll turn that over to Jim, and you can-
Uh, to your worship, I believe this could be done in a year. Um, the, there are a couple of um, uh, potential roadblocks, the the option B proposal assumes that we're going to be get granted a right of way by CN. And um, they have certainly granted right of ways of this type to other municipalities, uh, but their process is their process, and if that got significantly delayed, that would be an issue. Um, but uh for uh the origin, you you would start low and head high, and you would get to Eighth Street before you began to need that cooperation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, you know, our estimate is that the project receives funding in the budget, uh, that we could proceed the construction drawing, obtain our licenses, right of ways, permits, and get this done in a year.
And are we talking a referendum for that kind of money, or?
Depends on how we decide it needs to be funded.
To fund it, yeah. Yeah.
Uh, but to that point, uh, this is a lot of money, and if it's, if we don't have the money in our sewer budget in our reserves, then yes, it might have to go to a borrowing referendum, which now the community has a say in whether this actually happens or not.
Yeah.
You know, no different than a lot of major projects that. So.
Thank you.
But I guess that'll come forward when we see the budget from, uh, staff on where you think it can or cannot be allotted. So we'll see. Um, Jim, the only question I had left then on this, the five point two eight, did that include, and my apologies if it's in that and I missed it, but did that include the, uh, checking out the trunk line as was referred to?
Uh, no, that's, uh, an amount that we will be covering off in operations.
Okay.
The recommendation is, the first year we do it, it'll be a hundred and twenty thousand, but it ought to be done annually at eighty thousand.
Yeah, okay, thank you, yeah, 'cause I mean, and I agree with that, I mean, we need to continue looking at the other systems there, because the last thing we wanna do is spend five, six, seven million and, and, uh, only solve part of the problems, right, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else from council? Any questions then? Put this forward for the budget, and then we'll have our budget talks with the community next spring.
Seems like the fastest, most cost-effective way to go, it seems like a good start.
Okay, well, seeing none then, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, it is carried. So on that, um, we will have a motion to recess. And we need to go and call our policy meeting to order, but we'll have to, uh, recess this meeting until, uh, two o'clock, which, which points we come in for our other delegation for the fair share. So councillor Malkinson, councillor Wilber, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. And we will call our regular, uh, meeting back to order, going back to the agenda to delegations. Uh, which point now I'm going to, uh, turn things over to Jim, just to give a bit of background context to what we're about to see, and those introductions, Jim?
Uh, yes, your worship. Um, when we, uh, received the direction from council to explore, um, our vulnerabilities and possible approaches around fair share into the future, it was clear to us that in order to, uh, structure that RFP, either we had to ask for someone to independently, uh, review the history of fair share, um, or we had to make it part of the tender to do so. The decision made was to employ Mr. Griffith, Colin Griffith, uh, and C J G and associates to, um, provide that history for all bidders. When we looked at that, we also said, if we're going to use this meeting as a starting off point, where, uh, we move from our understandings, our current understandings of fair share and how it's used to a potential direction on how it will be used in the future, or how it will protect our vulnerabilities, we should all have an understanding at the table. And so, uh, the decision was made, and Colin in, to give a presentation to all of us. There are really only two people left in the area that have been involved in this since the beginning, and one is myself, one is Mr. Griffith. If I was to provide this review, I might find it impossible to avoid the temptation to speak about my own role and exaggerate it. Um, and in some way take credit for the entire process, but also, it's important to understand, when this process started, I was a deputy CAO, and so I was involved in much of the grunt work, but not much of the strategic planning. Colin was involved in setting the earliest strategies in this, um, whole process, and he is actually better qualified than I am to give you this history. And he also is unlikely to exaggerate my role in it. So over to you, folks.
Wow. With that, what are you gonna say about Jim?
Nothing has changed, that's all I can say. Um, well, thank you very much, and it's, uh, it's been a long time since I addressed a council in this building. I left, uh, the employee of the city of Dawson Creek in nineteen seventy-one, so it's, it's been a while, forty, I guess that's what, forty-one years now. So anyway, it's very nice to be back, and it's actually in the same room.
Probably hasn't even changed the decor.
The faces have changed. Um, anyhow, um, certainly, it, uh, I was very delighted to get the call from Jim to, uh, prepare a paper, if you like, and, uh, which I think is being distributed. Um, certainly, uh, fair share has got a very colorful history. And, uh, what I'd like to say before we get started is that even though there's very few of the original players left, right, either at the elected level or at the CEO level, um, the reality is that everybody had a role to play at that point in time. All of the councils, all of the provincially elected officials, all the CEOs, right? Um, but moving it all forward, it did happen because of the fact that the coalition of the local governments in the northeast actually proposed solutions to what they identified and researched as a problem, and marketed those solutions to the government. And, um, that is a mantra that we've always used, right? We don't take our problems to Victoria, we've always taken the solutions, and fair share was a solution that was arrived at by the collective progressive mentality of everybody in the Peace Region, northeastern BC, including Fort Nelson. And we took it forward, and over a long period of time, we kept marketing it over a period of fifteen years, until we got what we thought was a reasonably fair deal, and that was the, the last fair share agreement. So what I'm gonna do is just take you through some of the history, and I'm gonna use Jim in a different role. I will certainly try to make sure that he gets his share of recognition for anything that he did, but I don't.
Right now, put your mind on it.
Well, I, I don't, I don't want my silence, you know, to annoy you, Jim, right, on, on any given point. Uh, we'll try to do this as objectively as we can. Um, and, uh, like I said, there's a lot of different interpretations out there, and that's just the reality of life. Uh, we were involved, uh, in, uh, the whole series of things that happened, we'll take you through it. If you have questions, perhaps you might just wanna ask them as we go along, so we don't accumulate a big agenda of things people wanna inquire about. So we'll run into this, and if it's getting too long, uh, Mr. Mayor or council, just let me know, and I can start to short circuit it. But, uh, there is a lot of history here, and I think it does provide an excellent context for the next steps that the city is wanting to take. As far as myself is concerned, I have a consulting operation, and I have, uh, an extensive background in local government and with UNBC, uh, the municipal officers, curling, um, all kinds of things that are related to governance and structure. And, uh, I'm not gonna stop there for very long. Right now, I have a position that I fill on a contractual basis with the Northern Rockies, called the Director of Strategic Initiatives. Um, and even though I hold that position, I still basically do other work. Um, but the Northern Rockies wants me to more or less focus on what they're doing, and, uh, if I'm gonna do something else, I just, uh, run by them and make sure that they don't see a conflict in, in the work that we're doing. These are the people that are my associates, and, uh, uh, that are utilized. And, uh, what's very interesting is people like Maury Stewart, you all know, uh, naturally, he was with the regional district here forever. Jerry Tone, uh, was with Urban Systems, one of the principals, and Jerry Tone and a gentleman by the name of Gary Williams were our two key policy research people throughout the whole duration of fair share. And, uh, they were just absolutely key to it, as, as was Kathy Tate. Um, Carrie, uh, Katrin Saxte does a lot of work for the Urban Systems, you may have run into her lately. Um, and she does, uh, she does excellent work as well. So those are, those are just the people that we're using right now, particularly related to, uh, our work with the Northern Rockies. Having said that, um, let's just start off by going through and answering some questions. How the fair share got started, how a political coalition was formed, what do we mean by the concept of a regional property tax pool? The allocation agreement, and dealing with the provincial government, dealing with the oil and gas industry, and that's the Canadian Association of Petroleum Producers and SEPA, they are actually major, major players in all of this. Um, and just to, to get it into right perspective, uh, the oil and gas industry has, uh, a lobby that local government would envy in the sense that if they want something to be happening in Victoria, uh, there are corporate jets lined up over there the next day, right? They have a tremendous capacity to lobby, they have the ear of government, and right now, with the focus on BC's natural gas industry and LNG, you can believe that that is just a non-stop, uh, communication that's going on and lobbying over a whole, a host of issues related to that development. Um, so we'll go back, and we're just gonna touch a little bit on what existed uh, prior to the whole concept of fair share. And, has this got a pointer on it, Jim?
Yes. Now, I'll operate down.
Any suggestions?
The red button.
The one in the middle?
Yeah.
Oh, wonderful. So, just to, we're not gonna spend a lot of time on this, but we're just gonna, this is, because this is the basis, right, that existed before the fair share started. What you had was a whole series of independent steps being taken by individual municipalities to access or gain support from the industrial tax base. So as an example, we'll just focus on Chetwood here for a minute. They had these extensive benefiting areas for their recreation facilities that extended well past, that's Tumblr Ridge there, well south of Tumblr Ridge, and in fact, they incorporated some of the area that became Tumblr Ridge, okay? They then, in nineteen ninety-six, the Pine River Gas Plant, that's about twenty miles outside of the boundary, was incorporated by satellite, so they've had that as part of their tax base since ninety-six, as well as the Timbukh Plant, which there's been a cost-sharing arrangement with the city of Dawson Creek because of its location sort of halfway between the two communities. So, that's what was happening in Chetwood, they became a district municipality, they incorporated the lumber facilities that are right in the boundaries. You went over to Tumblr Ridge, nineteen eighty-one, uh, constructed basically by the province to a very high level, a very sophisticated level of services, and it was created at the time as BC's largest district municipality so that you can incorporate the coal mines into the boundary, so that, that you had a substantial tax base there to support that development. Aside from the fact that the government paid a great deal of the bill for all of the infrastructure to build the town. So that was their history. Hudson Hope was reincorporated from a village to a district municipality in nineteen sixty-five to incorporate the hydro dams into the boundary. Now, even though hydro dams don't pay taxes directly, they are supposed to be paying taxes based on the rate that the municipal council sets. Now, there's a bit of a distortion between the province and Hudson Hope over that issue. But the reality is, for the population of Hudson Hope, over the years, they've had, uh, a very significant grant in lieu of taxes given to them from BC Hydro, so it's sort of the equivalent, if you like, of a district municipality. Taylor, in nineteen seventy-five, was a village. The province incorporated the West Coast Gas Plant at the time, the pulp mill, the fiber coat pulp mill, and the forestry operations all into the boundaries of Taylor. There was a cost-sharing or a revenue-sharing agreement with Fort St. John, uh, that basically, uh, phased itself out over time. So you had the four district municipalities, in the case of Dawson Creek, in the eighties, and I don't remember the exact year, Jim, that the LP plant was built, but that was then moved into your boundary, right, so that that provided a significant tax revenue for you. And the OSB plant in two thousand and one was built adjacent to Dawson Creek, or to Fort St. John, was incorporated into their boundary. So that was the history of it. What happened was that the municipalities, particularly Dawson Creek and Fort St. John, had very limited access to the oil and gas tax base in the rural area. And Fort Nelson, and I was in Fort Nelson at the time, we had a specific problem because we were looking at playing policing costs, because we were nearing five thousand people, and we had no industrial tax base at all. So, in conjunction with the Peace River Regional District, Maury Stewart in particular, we said, look at, this whole issue of the oil and gas tax base has got to be addressed. So we should hire a consultant, and in this case, we hired Peter Adams. I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button. Now, where am I going here? Okay, I'm lost here. How do I get back? That was a call for help, actually.
Sure.
Um, I'll try to put, Peter Adams was the Director of Taxation Policy for the Provincial Government, and, uh, so he was a real key person. We hired them jointly to study this whole issue about the disconnect between the oil and gas industry and the communities. And the net result of the research was, and you can see the incorporated tax base there, and the findings were, in a nutshell, that ninety percent of the oil and gas assets in northeastern BC are in the unincorporated rural area. So despite the fact of a couple of gas plants incorporated, right, generally, there was fourteen thousand tax folios at that point in time, and only eight percent of them were incorporated. So, that contrasted, uh, because we looked not only at northeastern BC, we looked at the rest of the province, that contrasted exactly as the polar opposite to the forest industry communities. So if you go through Prince George and Quinell, and, and you just go right through the whole litany of all the communities that are based on forestry, those communities, to the tune of ninety-two percent, had full access to the forestry tax base that supported their community. And when you have full incorporated access, that means you can tax it at whatever tax level your council sets for all purposes. Okay? So, a little rub in this was that if you looked at Fort Nelson, it had one of the lowest per capita tax bases. And I'm just gonna stop and just give you two seconds of history, we're not gonna belabor this. But, in nineteen seventy-one, in Fort Nelson, the community, the BCR was extended up there in nineteen seventy. There was the major gas plant, there were forestry operations in the BCR industrial site, all south of the river. The town site was on the north side. The province said, with the arrival of the BCR, we're gonna incorporate a municipality up there, because there was no municipality in place. So, the community said, we want a district municipality, same as what you've got in this, in the, in the Peace Region. The province, for some reason, said, no, we're not gonna have that. So they said, we're gonna have an incorporation vote, which they did, for a village municipality. That vote was defeated. The province then turned around and rounded up ten loyal SoCreds and forced the incorporation as an instant town under section ten A of the Act. And Fort Nelson did not get the district municipality, and for the next thirty-eight years, they have tried to piece a district municipality together service by service. So you'll hear a bit about Fort Nelson as you go forward, and it's going to be, it will have some relevance to your longer-term future as well, because we're right in major negotiations with the province right now. So having said that, but that's the background, and so, so if you take a look here, right, there was a lot of synergy throughout the northeast, and you've got this, this BC's natural gas and oil industry, right? Okay, ninety-two percent of that tax base is not supporting the communities, so what are you going to do about it? So what we did is we organized, so these are the findings from the study, maybe we'll just stop on them. It's the richest industrial region in BC, the majority of the workforce lives within the municipalities, tax base is outside. Elsewhere in British Columbia, the industrial tax base and the policy of the province is to incorporate it inside municipality. Residential taxes are higher in some of the municipalities because of lack of industrial tax base support. Uh, industry is paying very low tax rates in the rural areas compared to industry elsewhere in British Columbia. And that is still true today, because that's part of the provincial competitiveness policy for encouraging investment in the oil and gas industry. And we will come to that point a little more precisely. And access to the industrial tax base is equitable, is, that, that's a misnomer, that's supposed to say inevitable. Because communities vary in terms of the access and the revenues that they were getting. So, there it is again, uh, the point. What happened was that the town of Fort Nelson, even though they were part of the original studies, decided they were just going to pursue the direct incorporation of the surrounding industrial tax base. In the Peace Country, the seven municipalities, uh, formed a coalition, they developed an allocation formula, and the open discussion with the province, and, and at that point, it wasn't called fair share, it was called towards taxation equity, which was very noble and very bureaucratic, and it didn't market very well. But anyhow, it worked. We then undertook extensive lobbying initiatives. We then undertook extensive lobbying initiatives. And I wanted to just share with you that when we made the first presentations to government, they basically just said, "Thank you very much." They thought it was hilarious, and they said, "Well, this can't be." And they said, "Well, that was a nice try, but there's nothing we can do for you." And, and that basically was what happened to the first delegations that went. And I gotta tell you about delegations, because we're not talking. When this coalition was formed, there was an uneasy tenseness in the coalition between rural and urban, between bigger communities, small communities, everybody trying to figure out what everybody else's agenda was. So, for many of the delegations to Victoria, because there was not, the coalition didn't have a high trust factor, quite often, our delegations were composed of twenty people. So when the delegation from the Peace Country hit Victoria, it was a very imposing group of people. And everybody was there to make sure that everybody's interest was well-protected, right? So, that was the first thing. So, in nineteen ninety-four, we were successful. We managed to get, convince the government to come up with four million dollars. They said, "We are," and this is after a lot of consultation with industry, "They said, 'We're going to put in two million from provincial general revenue. We're gonna put in two million from industry.'" We had proposed, and this is throughout all three iterations of fair share, the communities in the northeast never did ask the government for a grant, not once. Those words never passed the lips of any delegation. All that was ever proposed to government was that they should give the Peace River Regional District and the Northern Rockies Regional District the variable tax rate authority, so they could levy a tax against classes two, four, and five only, not against the residential, which is mostly the community or the commercial, and that money would be redistributed to the communities. That's all that was ever asked for at government. Now, they said, "We're not gonna give it to you," but they then turned around, and they levied as a provincial infrastructure tax, two million dollars, starting in nineteen ninety-four, and it is still in place today, against only classes two, four, and five. Zero for residential, zero for commercial, zero for farm, et cetera. Okay? It was seen as a temporary solution, the first agreement, and the agreement actually identified that you should be going out, trying to incorporate, trying to continue the process of directly incorporating some of the industry into municipalities. You should look at increasing the use of the benefiting area process and regionalizing as many services as you can. There should be more tax and revenue sharing between the communities. The province had a real stickler with sharing any of the money with the rural directors, because they basically have access to the tax base, right? And so they would only allow the five percent from the direct property tax to be shared with the rural directors. And that was their decision. In the meantime, there were other initiatives started, because this was, in accepting this money, I mean, nobody can turn their back on anything. The communities basically told the government, "This is a nice first step, but it's completely inadequate, right? And we are going to be reopening negotiations again." So there was a little hiatus there for a year or two, and then we started looking again at how can we develop the research to prove that, that we need the next phase. So there were things called two studies, North and South Peace Service and Taxation Studies, which were done. And they analyzed all of the situation again. A lot of that never did get implemented, because it would involve direct taxation of industry, and there just wasn't the political agreement amongst all the local players to proceed. So having said that, we're gonna stop for a minute and just talk about the regional tax pool, because this was key to getting the government to deal with the Peace Region. Because if you can just visualize the concept of a government giving four million dollars to seven communities and four electoral area directors, and then saying, "Well, now you guys figure out what to do with it." They were not gonna do that and then stand by and be lobbying and watch all of the and fighting over the distribution of the money. So, a key element of what we proposed and put together was what we called the regional property tax pool. And that is the allocation formula that, that more or less is still in place today, with some, some fine tuning. But this is a fundamental concept to anything that is, that happens with a regional approach to this kind of issue. Because the government is not going to, the open, right? To providing support if in fact, there is not going to be an agreement in advance as to how those funds are going to be utilized. So that was a very, very important element. Fair share two, in nineteen ninety-seven. So, in order to proceed to reopen negotiations, the coalition had to be reformed. And at that point in time, the rural directors made it one of their conditions that they would not rejoin the coalition unless they were guaranteed ten percent of the funds, and that had to be a deal breaker. The municipalities had to sign on and make that a deal breaker. Okay, so that's exactly what happened. So a lot of research and studies and lobbying were done. We developed a whole series of new positions. And indexing was a major issue. We had, we made two cabinet submissions and went through all the chain of command through Treasury Board. They were both rejected in, in the fall of nineteen ninety-seven. And so, at that point in time, the coalition nearly faltered, but then what was decided, we'd make a last-ditch attempt to take a different track, and that was to start to appear in front of the National Energy Board. And there was a gas plant being constructed north of Fort, Fort St. John, at that, the Farrell Peak Gas Plant, I think it was, Jim, if I'm right. And so we said, "Okay, we're gonna appear in front of the hearings." We did, in January that year. And lo and behold, if the province did not show up and made an offer of ten million dollars a year on a ten-year agreement, or started our ten-year agreement, it was twelve million a year, when it was fully engaged. So that was in place from nineteen ninety-seven on, and, and a major step forward. But, that agreement again was not linked to the property tax base directly. It was just seen as a provincial grant for infrastructure purposes, but it was not indexed, so didn't grow like a tax base, right? It was just a flat grant. And again, the allocation formula was enshrined right into the agreement. And that protected the government from any, getting, having to get involved in, in any squabbles at the, at the regional level between communities. So what happened next was that, and this is a bit of history, I'm just gonna, but it is important to understand what drove some of the, the issues at the point, at that point in time. Fort St. John proposed to the rural directors that they had got the North Peace Leisure Pool, agreed to by all of the participants in North Peace except for Taylor. They proposed that six other services should be regionalized, and the regional district electoral area said that they would not allow those to go to referendum. So the regionalization process stalled. And the other municipalities did not think that the fair share agreement, the ten-year agreement should be reopened. So, Fort Nelson, or Fort St. John, excuse me, organized what was called the Grassroots Initiative, and that was a proposal to look at a number of options for getting access to the tax base. And what drove this was the fact that in nineteen ninety-one, Fort St. John went over nineteen ninety-one, in two thousand and one, I guess it would be, Jim. They went over fifteen thousand, so they had to start paying ninety percent of their policing costs, so that cost them two million dollars a year. The government then downloaded a hundredth and a hundredth, used to be arterial streets in Fort St. John paid for by the government, that was turned back to the city, so that cost them over a million dollars in operating grants, plus they had to take over the capital cost, and, and they were not in very good shape. And then at that point in time, everybody suffered from the provincial government phasing out all of the per capita grants. But in Fort St. John's case, they were in a particular trouble, because over sixty percent of their fair share revenue was eroded, right? And so they had a necessity to try to open up the discussions. Other municipalities were not thinking that was so important. So the Grassroots Initiative was started. Fort St. John spent about a million dollars in that whole process. And in the end, what happened, they looked at, at all those six options there, either fair share, regionalized services, or the creation of a regional municipality. The net result of it was that there was a twenty-five-person citizens committee that was put together to consider that issue. Seventeen of those twenty-five people were rural people. They held over thirty meetings in the city, and in, and the vast majority of the meetings were held in the rural areas, all the rural communities. And then, and when the report was finalized, the net result was, they said, "The regional municipality had worked well, there's no major taxation implications for anybody." It was, it was advanced far enough that if somebody showed up at a meeting with their property tax notice, you could produce the exact tax implication for them right on the spot. You know, so that it would dissuade, you know, some of the rhetoric and just have people dealing in facts. But anyhow, in the end, the, and what happened, very quietly, was that there was, at that point in time, the regional district organized sort of a counterbalancing committee of everybody except Fort St. John to look at other aspects. And in the end, the two parties came together and reformed a coalition to renew fair share, as opposed to incorporating a regional municipality in the North Peace. And so that was a fun period, I might add. So having said that, Fort Nelson, at the same time, they had spent another fifteen years trying to get the government to incorporate the tax base to no avail. So they rejoined the coalition with the northeastern B C communities. And there was some wonderful work done at that point in time, and I wanted to just take a moment just to, for those of you who may not be aware, but collectively, we put together a regional policing model for all of northeastern B C. Okay? And we did, I don't know how much it actually cost us, because the money was all channeled to the regional district, but we spent about three years putting together this regional policing model. We had a governance structure put in place that every municipality signed off on. We had the service delivery model worked out with the R C M P. Mike Morris was the northern commander for the R C M P. But that model was, we had extensive meetings with Division E and federally with the R C M P, and they signed off on the whole delivery model. We had the structure in place, how the services would be delivered, how the detachments would be amalgamated. And then, we had a number of plenary sessions with all the politicians from all the municipalities, all eight municipalities in both regional districts. And we had everybody, every council pass resolutions signing off on the funding formula. It was absolutely one of the most disheartening things to see all that work disappear. And it disappeared because the driver was that the province had announced they were going to levy taxation in the rural areas for policing, the same, for the under-five communities in rural areas, the same as what you're paying, seventy percent. They were gonna recover those from those under-five. So that was what was driving it, that was what the model was based on. And we went to the U B C M, and the government said, "No, we're getting too much pressure from rural areas, particularly in, in the southern parts of the province, and we're only going to recover, I think it was thirty or thirty-five percent from the rural areas." And that basically then resulted in the small communities in the rural areas saying, "Well, this doesn't work anymore for us, because it would cost us more than what we'd have to pay." So that went for naught. So anyhow, the communities are back working together. The fair share grants were a particular, the fact that they weren't indexed to the growth of tax base, and everybody's facing a lot of growth, was a major issue. The other thing that happened was that ninety-seven agreement had a five-year reopener clause, and the province would not listen to any of the delegations about activating the reopener clause, because the thing was supposed to be reviewed at the end of five years, and we were proposing that it be reopened, and we look at indexing, and they would not do that. So, here's what the committee looked like. This is the coalition committee, this is the structure that was used for the whole process. And with this plenary session, we would have, for those meetings, that meant every politician was invited to the plenary session. This wasn't just, at the executive committee here, the work, what was called the working committee, that was the mayor's, right? That was sort of the executive committee. But when we had major reports or major policy decisions to make, we had meetings that involved every elected official in the northeast at those, at those plenary sessions. There was complete openness and transparency, everybody was involved. And that is what gave such power and authority to this whole movement in the eyes of the provincial government, was the fact that they were dealing with a lobby that represented every community and every electoral area in northeastern B C. That was where the power and the strength of the lobby was. Now, there were a number of conditions that were agreed to. The check for fair share goes to the regional district. But fair share is really nothing to do with the regional district. The coalition was a coalition of municipal governments and the electoral area directors. The regional district does not have a function called fair share. And that's the only way, and, and that would have to be delegated to them by all the municipalities. So the fair share coalition was a coalition of municipal governments and electoral area directors. And that's a very important distinction, because while the agreement is signed by the regional district, that is just for ease of administration, if you like. And the only thing that the regional district, that what they perform is really applying the formula to the grant, right? And then distributing the checks. So, that takes us to that juncture. Now, we're just gonna stop for a minute here. Well, I could, this is really neat, I wonder how this works? I can do this all day. Let me just, Jim, how can I get this to move on?
That's a really good question.
I'm stuck.
Let us try.
Let's try.
You call up the show on side and go to eighteen.
Yeah.
We've been there already.
We've been there, so eighteen wasn't the right one.
Yeah.
That's fifteen there, it says a number.
Twenty-one then.
Yeah.
Okay, that'll just, yeah, that'll be fine, just, yeah, okay. So just to illustrate, this is one of the, the, some of the research that we did that really gained the, the area six million dollars. What we did, they, they would not listen to arguments about the fair share grant. So you can see the fair share grant running there, no indexing, right? So through all those years, it was going to run through the ten years without any indexing. What we showed the province was what they were getting under the provincial rural tax, the provincial school tax, in terms of additional funds. And we said, "How can you treat the municipalities like this when you yourself, for your own tax levies, are getting all of this additional funding? This doesn't quite come out on the equitable side somehow." So that's the kind of thing that we did in terms of the research. And, and Jim will attest, because he was involved in, like you said, he, he called it grunt work, we called it research. But the reality of it was that we used a lot of consultants, and throughout this fifteen-year period we did that, we spent somewhere between five to seven million dollars. Now, the return on it was fantastic. But there has to be a realization that if you're going to do this kind of work, it's not a matter that you can go in unarmed. You have to be armed, and you have to actually have more sophisticated research than the government does. And so, having said that... And uh so, having said that, the province then decided to come up with a six-million-dollar ex-gratia payment to make up for the fact that they had not reopened the agreement when they were supposed to halfway through in two thousand and two. They signed an M O U with everyone, including Fort Nelson, right? So all of the coalition members actually signed an M O U that appointed a provincial negotiator, and it laid out the process by which there would be a movement to try to find a permanent solution to the industrial tax base issue, the oil and gas tax base issue for Northeastern British Columbia. So we started that negoti-, we worked for three years to get them to the table, and then the, this M O U was signed in two thousand and four. And Vince Collins was appointed as the provincial negotiator, and his job was first off to go and consult with all of the other ministries so that we were only dealing with one person representing the provincial interest. Because other than that, you'd have to go and deal with all these different ministries that have an interest in the issue and and you just can't, there's just no feasible way for that to happen. This is what was proposed. This is, we had a seventy-five-page position paper that we filed with Vince Collins that laid out all of the expectations, and this is what was proposed. Two regional tax pools, one for the Peace, one for the Northern Rockies, completely separate, right? The total funding should be based on industrial tax rates compared to other areas of the province. Now, these are groups of municipalities, like these are northern communities. We looked at, as an example, the revenue that would be generated if you used what's called the port authority tax rate. Now, for those of you who might not be familiar with that, the province decided a number of years ago that the port authorities couldn't afford to pay the tax rates that were being imposed by municipal governments, particularly in the lower mainland. So they came up with legislation and said, we're putting in an upper tax limit, twenty-seven fifty, right? So we ran that down, and lo, and so we did all these comparisons here, and you can't see them, I realize, but suffice to say that the twenty million dollars you gets equates to a tax levy perhaps of eight or nine or ten dollars, nothing like twenty-seven dollars, just to put it into perspective. But the other side of the coin is you have a bigger industrial tax base per capita if you include all of the oil and gas industries. So that was some of the, to be fair to the province, that was some of their concerns. So per capita revenue comparisons, they started off in the first part of the negotiation saying, well, this is what we're going to be looking at. We're go, here's a, here's a list of industrial communities, here's per capita assessments, and we're going to use that for the negotiations. That was in September of two thousand and four, and that concept did not last very long before it was basically abandoned. You can't read this, this is a pool game, I'm just gonna uh just tell you just very briefly what happened here. We signed a formal agreement that laid out steps and a process. What was supposed to happen is that when we were through negotiating and and Jim was on the committee, right? All of, we had what we called the three M committee, which was all of the current CEOs, they'd in, I'd retired at that point in time, but they hired me to to stick with it. And uh so we're negotiating with the provincial negotiator. So the agreement called for him then to go back and consult with the ministries, and then he was supposed to be bringing back a final report to the elected officials, right? And there was supposed to be some give and take of looking through, well, what can we make work here before it went through the decision-making process? What happened in reality was that after we finished our meetings, I think in September, October, maybe at the latest, Vince Collins took this in-house, and we could not find out another word of what was going on. The meetings that were called for under the M O U never took place. All that happened was that we were called down, and on February the first, we were presented with a final offer, and the offer went like this. Um, no, that's anyhow, um the final offer uh was presented, and it had very simple parts to it. Fort Nelson was excluded for some unknown reason, and I could talk about that indefinitely, we won't stop there too long. But it was an offer that said, look, we will give you forty million dollars upfront as a one-off grant, okay, for the historical disconnect you've had, for the fact you haven't been getting industrial tax money.
Are you talking Fort St., Fort Nelson, right?
No, this is the Peace country. Sorry if I'm getting you confused, Cheryl. No, this was the the fair share agreement in two thousand and five. Um so what happened was that they said, here is twenty million, and we're going to index it, okay? And you can have forty million dollars as a historical deficit payment. And to their credit, the municipalities in the Peace country uh turned around and they reallocated five million of that to Fort Nelson because Fort Nelson was excluded, nobody understood why, and which was a very generous and well-accepted thing because Fort Nelson had contributed in funding their share of the costs and so on. We tried at the, at that point in time to get them to to listen. Uh we were told by Vince Collins, no, there is no appeal to these decisions, they're done, and there's no appeal to a minister, to no one. So that is what happened there. Um so the fair share, in terms of spectrum of solutions, we'll just jump ahead a bit. What the fair share is going to be providing over the timeframe through to twenty nineteen is a total of about six hundred and ninety-four million dollars to the Peace River communities. Okay? Um it is an acknowledgement by the province that municipalities do not have the financial capacity to meet their infrastructure costs. It's a recommendation uh on the limits, limitations of the of the property tax base. It's also a significant recognition to the fact that the provincial government wants to first and foremost maintain a competitive business environment for the expansion of the oil and gas industry. And if you look at what you've seen and what you're experiencing today in the northeast with unconventional gas development, shale gas development, a lot of that can be traced back to this competitiveness policy. Because they put in specific incentives for the exploration of unconventional oil and gas, and that drove a lot of the discovery of shale gas. I mean, it's not the only factor, but certainly was a contributing factor. Because B C is still one of the highest-cost environments in the world. If you listen to the industry, it's a high-cost environment here. Um the fair share is one of the most significant precedents precedents in Canada for provincial sharing of provincial revenues with municipalities. In fact, there is not, to my knowledge, another agreement uh that compares to fair share. Um we'll just jump ahead now, this is just a summary of what fair share is. So if you look at thirty-five million dollars was the check this year, right? The indexing rate that we have used for a long time is is eight percent because that was the historical average growth rate of the oil and gas or the class two point five tax base. If that continues through till twenty nineteen, uh the annual check coming to the Peace country then would be something in the magnitude of sixty-four million. So that is a a very, very significant issue, right? And it's um, it has two sides to it naturally because one is is the fact that you're going to be getting more money, the other side of the fact is what you've got Evan and these people wanting to look at, and that is what happens if it isn't there in twenty twenty. Um so let's just take a look more specifically here. This is what Dawson Creek has to date as of August. You've received a hundred and eleven million, and based on that eight percent growth rate over the balance of the agreement, you, looks like you would be eligible for something in excess of another hundred million dollars, okay, for a total of about two hundred and twenty. And if you take a look, then you can see what all of the other communities are going to be getting from the fair share program. Okay? So that is very, very significant, especially if you go back and and realize that prior to to nineteen ninety-four, you weren't getting anything other than what you had directly in your tax base or through a benefiting area service. So it it is, it is a very, very significant.
So from ninety-four to ninety-seven, we had five million dollars in fair share revenue, is that right? Five million?
Excuse me?
Uh.
Yeah, in the first fair share.
Ninety-four to ninety-seven, we had five million dollars?
Yeah.
Oh, I was under the impression that it was a lot lower than that. But yeah, not surprising.
Yeah, no. Because it works on on the basis fundamentally, the fair share agreement works on the, on the base of population and your general assessment. Um that's how the money is distributed, so it's all relative, right? And it adjusts automatically depending on who's growing or who's losing population. So the tax pools, just to clear up a little bit of misconception, there's two tax pools because in this negotiation, the province said, the original money that you're getting, the twelve million, you can distribute on the existing formula, which is basically just population and assessment, that's all. The formally they approved, they wanted to have something that sort of to equalize the differences in industrial tax base support between the municipalities. So as you're all aware, you go through in Pool Two and you make a few adjustments because you've got, you know, you're in Canada Centre on a Benefiting Area and Fort St. John's got its leisure pool and so on. When you, when you basically just forget about Pool Two for a minute, you take the total and divide it out by the population and assessment of Pool One, it makes a difference of maybe one percent. It's 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 very, very minor. It just, so in essence, what you've got is you have got a pool of money that is distributed on the basis, right, of population and assessment. There is no entitlement, there's no entry level, right, for participating in fair share. Doesn't matter what your tax base is. And this is certainly um something that they're hearing a lot about right now from the Northern Rockies, right? Because the excluded Northern Rockies on some basis, nobody can yet figure out, and there is no, there's no rational explanation for it, but anyhow, that's a little different issue, but right now.
We're the wrong people to do the sales pitch to, they're in Victoria.
But uh but one of the things that is very important to understand, right, is that that um this is not about the degree of unindustrial tax base support, right? The other thing about fair share is that fair share does not stop any municipality and rural area, right, from utilizing the regional district mechanisms to cause sheer services. All those powers and authorities that you've always had are still available to you. Okay, the, I'm not gonna go into uh the Northern Rockies too much, except that I think what I would just suggest to everybody in the Peace country is that they will want to pay some attention to the discussions that are going on between uh the Northern Rockies Regional Municipality and the province, right? Because um they are going to have some impact on on future decisions, is my guess, right? And um all I would suggest is that it might be something that people will want to think about in terms of the the longer-term future in the Peace country. Because if the government was to radically change its policy relative to the treatment of Fort Nelson, you know, that may set a new precedent. Right?
Northern Rockies, is that only Fort?
Fort Nelson is now at, whoops, sorry, Fort Nelson is now a district municipality. So that whole area up there, the the town of Fort Nelson doesn't exist anymore, it's just a community. We get away with the regional district and the town, so it is just a regional government that takes in ten percent of the province. And it's exactly the same as Wood Buffalo, right, where Fort Merlin is just a community now, it's not an incorporated city. And and uh so you have one government, so Bill Streep is mayor up there, right? And I call him the ten percent mayor, actually, uh because.
Cause that's how often he's there, or?
Huh? Yeah, no, because he's he's mayor, he's mayor of ten percent of the province.
I don't think it's ten percent.
Yeah, no, it's it's ten percent of the of the province of Landmass. But here is, you talk about the province's competitiveness policy, and here's one of the the issues, right? And he, the tax rate um for the industry in the rural areas here, on average, is much higher around Chapman, right? But if you take the whole average of the tax rate in the Peace country comes in, in this, it didn't come in at eight fifty-eight, uh the government has just uh recalculated that and it came in at nine dollars, okay, currently. In the Northern Rockies, the tax rate is more like thirteen, so there's quite a discrepancy between what industry's paying here and what they're paying there, right? But these things going forward will all be important, right? Particularly when you appreciate that the the provincial position on fair share was all driven by the need for them to promote a competitive environment for the expansion of the oil and gas industry, so that is an important factor. So Northeastern British Columbia's fair share is certainly completely unique and a very positive precedent for everybody. And um I think at this juncture, that is all that I need basically to talk about, but but that's an overview of the history of how you've got to where you're at. And I know you've got certainly some different things that you wanna look at, and you've got Evan and and people here to do that, but that is an overview, it's certainly not the complete story. And um I wanted to just conclude my remarks by saying that that if there was one thing that I think people have to look backward to find, that is that if the North, right, does not work together, right, you are not going to have great levels of success dealing with any provincial government. That was the basis for fair share, and I can tell you that through every one of those fair shares phases, right, we had to reform and rebuild the coalition, right? Reform and build the coalition. And Jim will, I'm sure, agree with me to say that that is a full-time job for a whole bunch of people. Because there's a whole bunch of interests between rural and urban, right? And it takes a great deal of effort to uh have a coalition that can represent your collective interest. So that is, uh I think, my concluding remark, Mr. Mayor Collins.
Well, thank you. Um everything you want to know about fair share and that sum, right, and the history? Um this is looking at councils, is there anything on that at this time? I mean, obviously, we have Evan, I'm not sure if you were gonna uh follow up afterwards, but obviously the, where we're going from here now is that's where it started. Now it's uh, the reason why council wanted this information and going forward is um after twenty twenty, or if something was to change with fair share, or whether we're using our fair share finances, the income we have right now, and what we're using it for, is it appropriate? We all know where we're going, so. Thanks, Colin, for that. Is there any uh?
I'd like to ask Colin a question.
Sure, of course.
It's offside, Colin, just say so. It's to do with the Northern Rockies, Fort Fort Nelson megacommunity. Um what exactly um are some of the potential alarm bells, if are, if there are any, in the negotiations up there that we need to be aware of? What would you say would be two or three things that would could impact us?
Well, maybe, maybe if I might just, I'll, I'm, I'm not going to get too far down that road, but I will give you a, just some of my, what I think are sort of broad oversights, right? Um what you have in British Columbia today and in most of the provinces, just universally across Canada, right, is the fact that provincial governments have moved further and further away from taking any direct responsibility for regional economic planning, for socioeconomic benefit impacts, right? And for any concept of uh ensuring that infrastructure is put in place for major resource development, right, at the community level. They will, they will stick to the things that they're directly responsible for, right? So one of the things that is happening, right, is that you have a situation where provincial and federal governments are all under fiscal discipline, if you like, right now, they're all saying, look, we don't have enough money. But on the other hand, um what is really important is that you cannot have the provincial revenues being generated in these resource areas, right, without. without the infrastructure and the capacity of the communities being enhanced to be able to accommodate it all. And, so, to me, um, what the collective interest of everybody in the North particularly is, it's around that issue. It's around the issue of how is there going to be, um, the persuasion, if you like, of a move towards more direct involvement by provincial governments in northern resource development. Cause I'll just give you an example. From nine, from two thousand and five to two thousand and eleven, the provincial government was the beneficiary of three billion dollars in revenue from the Northern Rockies. Just the Northern Rockies. That doesn't add on this area, right? In terms of job creation, the job creation in British Columbia's natural gas industry will not occur with the LNG sites. Ninety percent of the job creation is gonna be in northeastern British Columbia. Ninety percent will be. We just had CAP and SEEP into meetings in Victoria with the, with the ministries. So, if you're looking forward, right, I think you can, um... I guess my, my suggestion is that this is why there has to be some homework done because of the fact that it's a new world out there, right? Provincial governments, as you've heard all through your career, are always concerned with the escalation in education and health costs and how they're going to meet those costs. But the reality is that those costs are consuming a greater percentage of the provincial budgets all the time, which leaves the other twenty or thirty percent just scrambling for funds, right? And so, you always hear, "Well, we're broke." I'll just tell you that what we've always advanced to the government, right? And through the fair share presentations and everything we did for fair share, and again with the Northern Rockies, is that, "Look, there has to be investments made, right? This is a return on investment. This isn't like, this is some grant to, to municipal government, right? That, that's, this is basically about the cost of doing business, right? And I think that's how it has to be approached over the long term. And I don't know, Charlie, I, I think I skated successfully, I hope, around your, your question.
Well, you're master, that's good. You haven't lost any skills.
I was wondering how you were gonna answer it with the ongoing negotiations and everything you're doing. I thought, "How are you gonna answer this one without, you know, compromising?"
I have a question then about those ongoing negotiations. So, you're telling us, um, we have to work together as the northeast altogether. So, how do we then, how are we gonna do that if they're, if, like, they're already, they're already in the process? They're already negotiating and making plans with regards to the Northern Rockies? So, how would we, how do you order the whole entire...
Well, I, I think there's, there's some timing issues there. The Northern Rockies, right, is just trying to catch up, if you like. It's not leading, it's trying to catch up. And then, what happens, you know, with the Northern Rockies, right? I'm just saying that...
So, they're not negotiating into the future, they're just negotiating...
Oh, no, no, we're, we're negotiating for, for going forward, right? Because there's a lot of infrastructure that they have to deal with going forward, right? So, but, all I was saying, if I might, to just clarify, is that I think there's, there's, um, very substantial reasons why, uh, all of the communities in the North have to work together.
Yeah, yeah, I get that, I just...
Yeah.
I'm already into the process and...
Well, that process was just to catch up for the fact that they were excluded from fair share in two thousand and five.
They're trying to get into a process that we already have.
Yeah.
But the reasons why the province might say yes, or the reasons they might say no, were they made visible this time, unlike last time, would certainly give Eastern Regional District a really firm understanding of where you stand.
Yep.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
So, much care.
Yeah.
I think that was the only warning, somewhat warning caveat in there, right?
Well, I, I, the, the thing is, is that, that everybody is trying to do the same thing. Everybody is trying to get their community equipped to deal with the growth and, and be able to support the industry and be able to have good quality services, right? That's what everybody is, it's, that's what it's all about, that's the common denominator. And, and it just, it's not just the northeast. I mean, you're gonna have a lot of pressure on, on some of the communities that are gonna be hosting, uh, the LNG plants, particularly during the construction periods, right? So, um, and then you've got all this big emphasis on mining. If you take a look out here at all the, the mining that, that's happened, I mean, there's tremendous job growth taking place already. Well, how is that all gonna be accommodated, right? So, I don't think, in terms of going forward, that your arsenal is empty. I think it's a matter of, uh, looking at all of the strengths that you have, uh, in order to renew it. But the, the fair share, because it's a specific agreement with you, right? You, you're gonna have to deal with that at some point.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, Colin, thank, thank you so much for that. That, uh, was a great information, a bunch of information to have, for sure. Obviously, this, a lot of this stuff you're using with Fort Nelson, I can tell too, and we'll, we'll see how that, uh, goes and we'll be monitoring and watching that as well. But, uh, I think the biggest takeaway for me, which I think you've mentioned a couple of times, is not only with fair share, but everything else that we're doing too. If it's a regional issue, it has to be approached in a collaborative regional approach in order to be successful. And I think, uh, we know we've got this until, if you want to, on the MOU until 2020. And I think if anything was to go past that, obviously, it's a regional issue as well.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. There's no, nothing else then? And Evan?
No, would you prefer that I lead now, or is this up to you?
Up to you, yeah.
You're the one that has to get on the road whenever you wish to get on the road.
Well, I, I enjoy this, I haven't watched somebody else in council.
Do you have a long plan?
Uh, mate, just got a quick one, yes.
Okay, so why don't we just take a two-minute break then? If you'd be able to run out? Or you, we're gonna continue on here, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, thank you for having me today, in, in the interest of time and being that you started your day at, well, eight-thirty in terms of getting the agenda off and certainly understanding how long a day it is. I'm gonna be very brief. Uh, this meeting is introductory for me to introduce myself to you folks and for you to, uh, ask, ask any questions that you may have of the company or myself. I'm gonna just quickly give an overview of the work that we're planning to entertain for the city of Dawson Creek. Uh, before I start though, um, I'd like to congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, and your council and the community on your previous U-18, uh, under women's hockey championships. Um, I just was given a brief last night and today on the significant impact it has and being a hockey guy myself, um, when a small community can band together and access the volunteer base, you can and, and pull off what you did. It's an incredible accomplishment, so congratulations to you on that.
Thank you.
My name is, my name is Evan Parliament, and I have been in local government for twenty-five years. I originate from Alberta. I've been in small communities throughout Alberta. Um, this issue is close to heart. Um, in Alberta, we have a county system where the urbans are incorporated municipalities and the counties represent the rural area. And this issue affects every urban municipality in Alberta. The county system's a little bit different from the regional district. In two thousand and three, I moved from Alberta to British Columbia. I've served in two communities, uh, in Summerland, British Columbia, in the Okanagan, and most recently in Sook, for the last six years on Vancouver Island. To echo the comments made by Colin, and I can't stress it enough, and it's, it's a super comment, um, you need to work collaboratively together. Um, Greater Victoria has thirteen member municipalities. And the biggest issue facing Greater Victoria is regional transit. And each community has an answer to regional transit. And each community for the past twenty years is trying to advance their interests, and they're getting nowhere, there's no traction. And the government basically told the thirteen-member municipalities, "You have to submit one proposal and you have to work together and come to an agreement first before you come to us for funding." And regional transit and light rail transit's about a one-point-three-billion-dollar price tag. And the government will not listen unless there's one voice representing thirteen municipalities. So, I just wanna echo that. Um, you folks have a tremendous opportunity here with this unique funding arrangement. What we are here and what we've been engaged to do is to simplify this very complex issue so the public can understand it. We're gonna have a public consultation process, and we wanna keep it simple. And we want to focus on two major areas. We wanna focus on the use of fair share funding, both in the operating and capital perspective. And we also wanna look at the what-if scenario. What if you lose twenty-five percent of this hundred-and-seven-million dollars projected at eight percent for the next six years? Uh, what if you lose fifty percent? What if you lose it all? That starts with this transparent exercise that we are going to simplify this entire subject and, and, and get the public involved. Explain to them what fair share funding is, what the community faces in terms of these what-if scenarios. Let's look at the operating component, the capital component. Now, there's several methodologies we're gonna use. I'm not gonna bore you with them today, I'm gonna quickly go over them. I've used two of them. I have not used the third one. It has been suggested we may wanna use the third one, I'll talk a little bit about it. It all depends on what the public has to say, because what the public has to say is the most important thing. We wanna be able to put together some mitigating strategies based on public input so council can entertain the final report and hopefully lead toward a council policy that will aid you in your fiscal decisions based on the public input. And the public needs to understand what fair share is all about. So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna assess the risk of declining revenues in these four what-if scenarios, twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, hundred percent reduction in fair share funding. In two thousand and twelve, it's just under eleven million. It's been mentioned you're gonna have access, based on eight percent growth of another north of a hundred million dollars between now and twenty nineteen. What if we lose partial of that funding? We're gonna identify some strategies to shield you if that indeed comes to fruition. What if you lose twenty-five percent of fair share, if you lose two and a half million? What does that mean to your tax rate? What does it mean to your reserves? What does it mean to your overall surpluses? What does it mean to service levels? We're gonna definitely talk to the public. We're gonna explain to them what this fair share is all about from a practical point of view. We're gonna employ the KISS principle. We're gonna present you with the final report and a policy to, to, to look at. We're trying to do this by the end of January twenty thirteen, that's the goal. Assessing the risk. There's two methodologies we can use to assess the external risk facing the city of Dawson Creek and the area. We can use PESTL, which is common. Stands for political, economic, social, technological, environmental, and legal factors. We can also use Porter's Five Forces, which analyzes sort of the external macro world surrounding Dawson Creek. We are going to, again, focus in on the twenty-five percent to a hundred percent reduction scenarios. This is PESTL Illustrated. I'm not gonna go through them all, but basically you have six macro, six external forces acting on your company, the, the, the city of Dawson Creek. And we're going to identify the risk, the external risk facing the city of Dawson Creek relative to fair share funding. Now, PESTL works with SWAT. All PESTL does is feed SWAT. We've all heard about SWAT, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. PESTL, once we identify the external risk, once we identify the macro factors, that will feed into a SWAT analysis of the twenty-five percent reduction in fair share, the fifty percent reduction in fair share, and so on. We are also gonna look at, when we talk about the what-if scenarios, how does it affect your capital projects? And how does it affect your operational day-to-day programs? Every year, you have an operating budget, which includes utilities, materials, supplies, labor, the cost to run the city of Dawson Creek, and then, of course, you have all your capital projects. Currently, uh, seventy-seven percent of your fair share funding is distributed toward operating and twenty-two percent is capital. So, we're gonna talk about that. More importantly, we're gonna hear what the public has to say through our public consultation exercises. And those findings will be summarized in strategic, um, mitigating strategies that will come before you in the final report and hopefully will lead to a policy. We're also may, or may not, depending on the input, get into Porter's Five Forces, which we've adapted for the public sector, focusing on the strategies. Again, how does it affect your capital? How does it affect your operating? You have roughly eleven million dollars annually, growing at hopefully eight percent for the next six, seven years. How does this affect moving forward on all the infrastructure ills? But more importantly, to some, how does it affect your annual operating budget? And when you get down to the brass tacks, your tax rate? Are you competitive? Will the public accept a tax rate increase if you take less from the fair share fund to fund operations and you allocate more fair share funds to capital, for example? I'm not gonna get into getting into a long definition of the public sector adaptation of, of Porter's Five Forces, but this is an external tool, just a planning tool, that's all it is, that looks at what is facing the city of Dawson Creek, whether it's a capital or operating, uh, program. I talked a little bit about our public consultation. We're gonna look, use a couple of, uh, innovative and interactive, um, exercises, whether it's a mock council meeting or actually using funding. You know, we're gonna have participants in the public consultation actually be given eleven million dollars in monopoly money. And we're gonna say, "Okay, you've got eleven million dollars coming in in fair share funding, or ten million. Where would you allocate those funds when you have an understanding of what the operating budget looks like? And that twenty-seven percent of the fair share funding is your total operating, or your, your total revenues? Your operating revenues on an annual basis? Where are you gonna allocate that ten, eleven million dollars?" And we want them engaged, because out of this entire exercise, it is critical that the public understand what fair share funding is. And as a practicing CAO, when we go through exercises in my twenty-five years, it's surprising how many times at the end of the exercise, where the public will come and say, "You know what? I really didn't quite understand what the open house was about, or I don't quite understand what DCCs are about. I don't understand what accumulated surplus means or reserves." And that's our job, okay? That's what Gagnon Strategics is gonna focus on, because I've lived that world. I, I know what the public asks, being a, a CAO. I don't have any history in Dawson Creek, it's a completely independent review. Whether I side with this or that is irrelevant. I'm coming in this with completely, uh, open eyes and gonna do a complete independent analysis and work with the public, cause that's really what you want. You don't wanna hear what I have to say, that's not why you hired me. You wanna hear what the public has to say. And my job is to explain it to them in a simple way and have them participate so they can tell you what the policy should look like. I'm not gonna go into how we're gonna come up with these recommendations and how we're gonna come to a policy. That's for later. But of course, the policy document is something that this council will entertain. We're gonna compile all the results. And I have to say, your strategic plan is different than most strategic plans in every other community, not because by choice, but because every community has a different strategic plan. Your risks and your fair share funding and how you allocate those funds have to align with your strategic plan. If some of the risks identified are not applicable, council can discard them and, and dump them. If you wanna focus on just the top three risks relative to fair share funding and incorporate that align, and align that with your strategic plan, you may do so. So, when we consult with the public, we'll also be talking about your strategic plan. Because everyone in the public here is about an OCP. Very few understand what a strategic plan is. Everyone understands more or less what a official community plan is, because it does get a lot of attention. But what is a strategic plan and how does fair share relate to that? So, we'll compile all that and give you a final report. In closing, like I said, I've been in the business since nineteen eighty-six, working in small communities. I certainly understand this issue from the context of urban rural funding. Uh, Gagnon Strategics is based out of New Brunswick, their head office is based out of New Brunswick. Their president is an ex-CAO, a community called Hamilton, New Brunswick, which is on the border of, of Quebec and New Brunswick. Um, I have teamed up with them. The associates include, um, several people from the private sector and the public sector. They want to do some work in Western Canada. This is the kinda stuff they do. Um, Eves Gagnon, who is the president of Gagnon Strategics, uh, is a ex-CAO of fifteen years who is into collaborative strategic planning. Um, this particular RFP struck his interest as it did mine, because of my Alberta background. And so, that is why we are here and we are thrilled to be here. And I do thank the city of Dawson Creek for this opportunity. With that, I promised Jim no more than ten minutes, so I'm gonna end. I will field any questions you may have and we'll have an opportunity to work together in the next two months. Thank you.
Well, thanks a lot, Colin. Looking at council, I know it's been a long day, but is there any questions or? I'm, I'm sure we're, as the process goes along, we'll get some questions, but I see one councillor sitting behind you waving his arms, so...
What was your timeframe to get into January, did you say?
Well, I mean, this is a, this is a preliminary schedule offered to me by the city of Dawson Creek. I'm hoping to have, based on public consultation, we have Christmas coming up. We've got the new year, and I certainly understand how tough that is. If council wants to go later, that's, that's a directive from you to me. I'm gonna be shooting for January thirtieth. I'm trying to align a final report so you can take it to your budget meetings when you start the deliberations of twenty thirteen. start the deliberations of twenty thirteen. If you give me an extra two weeks, I'll gladly take it.
I've never met a consultant who would...
I don't, simply don't want to rush just to get it done by certain date that used to be...
Yeah, Shelley?
Yeah, I think when we awarded the contract, we did defer it a couple of weeks, depending on the council meeting schedule, so that they had enough time to do their work, because of the Christmas schedule, we didn't want to get a public consultation when nobody was around or show up, so...
Yep. No, but I mean, it might appear a little rushed, but I think it's important as long as the work gets done in that time period, that's what's most important, and we need that for going into our budget and going in, we have our strategic planning the first or second, first week of January, the fifth and sixth, I believe, so it kind of all aligns in there altogether.
Right.
The main thing is, is, you know, between now and then, all the communication we have collectively will be important, because we want to ensure that we do get a good cross-section, good participation in the community, so that'll be really important, because if we don't get that, then it's somewhat for naught, so... But no, I think, oh, sorry, Charlie?
Well, just really to add on to what you've said there, is that one of the challenges, I think, for all communities is general apathy towards government, and we are subject to tyranny, I guess, some would call it tyranny, others might say it's constructive engagement, but you just hear from a few people.
Yep.
And that's fine, it's good they're involved, but I would just like to echo the need to try to get a balanced cross-section, and that's going to be a real challenge, not just to you, it's a challenge for everyone.
But I think it'll be important on us as well to make sure that we're talking it up as a council and encouraging people to participate and make sure we reach out and get those groups in the community involved, and those people that you usually hear from on the streets that have concerns, this will be their opportunity to come out and have a good forum where they get to be heard.
I appreciate you used the word collaborative engagement.
Yes.
That's really important, too.
That's really what this is all about. That's how I see it, and I want to hear your expectations too. I mean, that's, you know, how many public consultation meetings are you looking at? You know, I mean, the more the merrier, but we have a tight schedule. We want to make sure we do not limit ourselves when we do hold a public consultation meeting. If it's only two hours or three hours and it goes very well, should we have a second one? You know, I say yes, and I'll get into more of the detail of how we're going to structure that public consultation meeting, but that's something that the council should think about.
Yep. Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, just one thing, that's the, under the leadership of Mayor Calvin Crook, the city engaged in a visioning exercise in the strategy there, just throwing this out, I think the city council, Jim will correct me if I'm wrong, identified twenty, twenty-five different organizations or interest groups, like the Library Board, the Historical Society, and they were invited to send representation into that process. So, there are many existing organizations that I'm sure if they were asked and they understood what it was about, might be a good way of getting a cross-section with the community.
Yep, that's good.
Yeah, what we'll do when we're completed the public consultation is we'll theme groups and we'll put them in themes and certain categories, whether they're non-for-profit, are they NGOs, non-government, are they private sector, are they institutional, are they the youth? Like, we'll theme it and we'll provide a summary of that.
That'll be good, yeah, because obviously, the expectations or needs that come out of the locals will be quite a bit different as it goes forward, so that's good. I'm looking forward to going through this process, looking forward to having those town hall meetings, because we'll be participating as we need to at those as well, so... Any last questions then for that? Well, thank you very much. You said you'd be brief, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you. Nice to be here.
But it was great information, looking forward to working with you.
I'm looking forward to a tour of your En Cana facility next, so I've got the recreation department waiting for me, so I'm going to go tour your facilities.
Well, that's the most important part of today.
Thank you.
We're pretty proud of that. What's that?
Perhaps you can take him on a tour of the En Cana facility.
I see, okay. I know the swimming pool well. So, on that, on that, we need a motion to adjourn our regular meeting now, right? So, councillor Malkinson...
McFadden.
McFadden, all those in favor, opposed, carry, and we are officially adjourned then. Thank you.